Hi, my fellow commissioners.
Greetings.
Got reparations in 1832. A gentleman, whose name is escaping me, sued his quote-unquote masters and actually won his case and got back pay. Now, we could call it reparations, but I-I-I call it back pay. I'm a little slow. These big words have problems with me, so I-I think of it as back pay. Callie House led a movement to create reparations, a movement which this government did some horrible things to her and her movement. She did some magnificent things and-and you have a-a grand history. On the panel, you have folk who've been involved in history as long as-longer than most of us have been alive. There have been great groups who have kept it alive. The story of reparations, groups like InCobra, groups like December 12th, groups like the National, help me out, brother Daniel, the National-
African American Reparations Commission.
I'm glad you heard it. Taking a shortcut. You've had all kinds of groups. You've had, uh, newer groups have joined in. ADOT, the Freedmen. You have had all kinds of folk who have come up here. On a legislative level, you had everyone from, from the Congress where they've been fighting this issue long and hard. Congressman Hawke, oh, Lord, I'm-I'm blurring up here.
John Conyers.
John Conyers. Man, how you gonna? When I think of Dr. Hawkins, it just takes my mind away.
All right.
John Conyers, Representative Conyers fought this issue long and hard. And-but at the state level, uh, a council member, no, well, he was a council member at one point. Assemblyman- member Charles Barron got into the play and-and-and fought this issue. He and I started this issue out, him in the Assembly, me in the Senate. And it moved and changed and things moving around till finally, finally, a great day was approached where your strength, your ability, is what made this day possible. So I am glad. People will say, why on this planet are we doing this here in Southeast Queens? Now, I know you know, but I don't want you to tell them. I-I don't want you to tell everybody. Now, she knows that Southeast Queens has more black people than metropolitan Atlanta. Southeast Queens, the blacks in Southeast Queens are richer than the ones in-in Metropolitan Atlanta. I could go on and on. I'm very proud of Southeast Queens. But reparations, of course, is not simply a Southeast Queens issue. You wouldn't have it that way, would you? That-you heard it. She would not have it. This is a, actually, it's a worldwide issue. It's a nationwide issue. It's a statewide issue. The first reparations commission hearing was up in Buffalo. Was it that? Was that Buffalo?
Buffalo, yeah.
Shuffle off to Buffalo. And it was fantastic. Man, if you weren't there. But that's all right. We said that we want to bring them to Southeast Queens because there's no place like home. And you don't have to click your heels three times to know that. So we are here, and in just a few minutes, we are going to be able to see the people, the-the members of the of the reparations commission, commission, as they start their work. Now, they're going to start by having a business meeting. A business meeting means that they will do their work. We'll get a chance to watch and listen, but we cannot participate. They may, if time allows, open it up for a question or two, but we also are going to have, right after that business meeting, we are going to do a hearing. My mind, that's when you get involved. This hearing that they are working on has to do with a couple of things. They're charged. Wait a minute, they're charged. First and foremost, the commission is charged to see if there is a case for reparations. Is it deserved, first and foremost? If they ca-they are free to say no. If they say that there is a case, then they need to hear from you. And they need to hear, and you need to tell them of your experiences. Now, now, let's be clear. The more that your experiences have to do with New York State, the better it is. They are not in charge of Georgia. Lord have mercy. They would not be in charge of Florida. Man, if they were in charge of Florida. Be a different Florida. They are not in charge of many of these other places, but they have the jurisdiction over the issue of New York State. So under those conditions, the more that you can speak to New York State, the better it is. You have the right to speak of your personal situation, your family's situation, things that you have heard and seen, things that you have studied, things that you are putting out. But you also have the right to say, this is your vision for reparations. You have a right to to question them on anything that you wish. Now, I merely ask, speak your mind, but mind your speech. My ears are delicate. Four-letter words, the only four-letter word that I want to hear tonight is work. And that's what we're here to do. So we're going to be respectful because we're Southeast Queens. Other parts of town, they may not exactly know what respect is. They may have forgotten their home training in other parts of town. But we have not done that here. We can disagree without becoming disagreeable. Nothing wrong with having a strong opinion. Nothing wrong with letting the other person speak also. There's beauty in it. So those are some of the things that we are going to do, but I'm gonna, I've ne-I never stop a conversation without doing something very dangerous. Messing with you, yeah. Very dangerous. I offer the the audience to ask me any question that you wish. Any question. I just warn you one thing. Don't ask me anything that you don't want to know. Because I'm here to give it to you uncut.
Senator?
Yes, ma'am.
I think we're gonna save you from that.
Okay, then you done saved. Then I will say this. Then I will, you're about to see me turn this over as soon as our our commissioner sits down. Madam Chair, on behalf of a very grateful Southeast Queens, we wish you well, you and the commission. We wish that you journey well, that you listen well, that you study well, that you do all things well. We are very grateful that you are here to to allow us to participate as we can. And having said that, can we get a warm welcome to the commission on reparations? Come on, Southeast Queens. Now, that's Southeast Queens.
Thank you, Senators James Sanders Jr. We are so grateful for your support. We just want to acknowledge all of the many folks that came out here in the rain. Give yourselves a round of applause for being here today. So, good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us. We are the appointed members of the New York State Commission on Reparation Remedies, established through legislation signed by Governor Hochul on December 19th. We're about to celebrate the one-year anniversary of the signing. And our mandate, as the senator said, is to examine the legacy of slavery, subsequent discrimination against people of African descent, and the ongoing impact of the injustices in the present day. Since our official swearing-in on July 30th, we have-
Greetings, Madam Chair. If you're speaking, if you could have them turn on the volume for this Zoom.
Sure, thank you. Since our official swearing-in on July 30th, we have been diligently working to fulfill this charge. I'd like to give the senators, the commissioners, an opportunity to introduce themselves before we begin, and I'll start with myself. I am Dr. Shawna Hawkins, and I am the chair of this commission. I'm honored to serve as the chair. I'll pass. Thank you. Dr. Jenkins?
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Dr. Deborah Jenkins, and I'm the vice chair of the commission. Nice to be here with all of you.
Do y'all hail from somewhere?
From the Boogie Dome.
I'm from Brooklyn, but I am from Rochester, New York as well right now. Rochester's home. Hey, Rochester, thanks for watching.
I just thought the folks might want to know. I'm Dr. Ron Daniels, and I am the president of the Institute of the Black World 21st Century and the convene of the National African American Reparations Commission. And I'm delighted to be here in Southeast Queens, but I hail from East Elmhurst, the neighborhood where Malcolm X resided. So, and delighted to be here with you.
Can you hear me? Hi. Good afternoon. My apologies to everyone for being a few minutes late. I was doing well until I got into the mall area, and then I said, where am I? Where am I going? So forgive me. I'm delighted to be with you all this afternoon. I'm Jennifer Jones Austin, Jennifer Jones Austin Esquire, and I am a Brooklyn girl. So, glad to be with you all.
We have some commissioners on Zoom. Would you all like to introduce yourself? Linda, can you hear me? Linda Brown Robinson. Well, we have Linda Brown Robinson from Syracuse, New York. She is on the Zoom, and we want to welcome her. And we also have Lorie Daniel Favors, who's also on the Zoom, and we welcome her. Can you hear us? All right. Hopefully, we can get that fixed. But before we begin, we want to acknowledge and provide gratitude to Governor Kathy Hochul for her leadership in establishing the commission. We want to give her a round of applause. Of course, to Senate Majority Leader Andrea Stewart-Cousins for her unwavering support. Assemblymember Carl Hasty for his commitment to the work that we're doing. Of course, to our very own Senator James Sanders for sponsoring the legislation. And Assemblymember Salages for sponsoring the the legislation as well. We want to also acknowledge the hard-working team at the Office of General Services, including Bradley Allen, Tanisha Rag, Paige Aaron, for their instrumental support in weekly operations, and special thanks to Pierre Duncan for her invaluable support as well. With that said, we would like to call this meeting to order at 4:47 PM. And we will begin with the approval of the minutes. We want to make sure that we can get the commissioners that are on Zoom to hear us, to acknowledge that they can hear us. Commissioner Daniel Favors, Commissioner Brown Robinson, can you hear us?
Yes, thank you so much.
I can now. Thank you.
Would you like to introduce yourselves? You didn't get an opportunity to do that.
Linda Brown Robinson, Commissioner from Central New York.
Lorie Daniel Favors, Commissioner from New York City, Brooklyn to be specific.
Thank you. So we'll start with the approval of the minutes. Everyone should have reviewed the minutes, and if we need to come back to the minutes, we can do that. But if you have, if you've reviewed the minutes already and you'd like to make a motion, please do so.
I move that the minutes from the meeting be approved.
There's a, there's a motion to approve the minutes. Can I get a second?
Second.
The motion has been seconded. All in favor? Oppose? Any abstentions? The motion to approve the minutes have been moved and carried. Thank you.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Chair, this is Linda Brown Robinson. Because we can't see who who made the motion and who seconded.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Jones Austin made the motion, and Commissioner Jenkins seconded.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next, we're gonna move to the update on the commission's work. And so I want to just provide the community update on the timeline of the work that we've been doing as a commission. And so since our inception, the commission has held four business meetings. We facilitated discussions to advance the work of our of the mission of the commission. We've conducted, well, today, we'll make two public hearings. We've had one successful hearing in Buffalo, and today, you all have demonstrated that today's public hearing will be successful. So thank you, Queens, for showing up. Give yourselves a round of applause. We've also established weekly meetings with OGS and the Executive Committee. And the Executive Committee members are Dr. Jenkins, myself, Linda Tara, Linda Tarrant-Reed, and Commissioner Jones Austin. Right here. We've also launched an active website, serving as a platform for public engagement. If you have not visited the website, it is NY.gov backslash reparations. I would just want to acknowledge that Assemblymember Salages walked in the room, and we want to acknowledge her leadership. Thank you. We've also formed a subcommittee to identify subject matter experts in the form-to inform our work. Relation-in relation to operational developments, we've created job descriptions and contracted roles for an audiovisual company, interim operations manager, parliamentarium, executive director, historian, and research researcher. And in fact, right now, if you go to our website, you will find a contract for RFQ for a communication firm. Again, for those that didn't hear, our website is NY.gov backslash reparations. Additionally, we'll have RFQs for audiovisual support and upcoming opportunities for historian and researcher. So please pay attention to the website because those are coming up pretty soon. We are pleased to announce that we have identified a candidate for the executive director. I want to acknowledge her if she's here, but it's Dr. McKinnney Chisholm Straker. She has been selected as the executive director, and we hope that all the approvals for the process to officially assign her to the role will happen in mid-January. Is Dr. McKinnney here? Oh, yes, thank you. She's there in the green. We want to make an opportunity for her to stand one more time. Dr. Chisholm Straker is here. Thank you for being here today. Some of the key successes that we would like to share, of course, are the Buffalo hearing where we partnered with Commissioner Hoag to leverage his network, and we had about 200 individuals that came to support the public hearing. We've also collected public hearing, public feedback from Albany, New Rochelle, Syracuse, in addition to Buffalo, which will inform our final report. Additionally, all of our press releases and public statements have been developed internally through the commission for transparency. But we also do, we also are excited about the 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 work that we've done, but we've also experienced some challenges. I want to acknowledge some of the challenges. We've been challenged by the hiring and contracting processes due to procedure requirements that have truly slowed our momentum. Even with hiring the executive director position, it took us almost three months, and we still don't have a final approval for hire. And so we also experienced challenges with limited preparation time for the commission. We had to take the last six months just to get the commission started. When you heard me talk about the job descriptions that we had to develop hiring staff, and we still are experiencing considerable delays. Although we're grateful to the support, we are going to need additional time. And in fact, we need to acknowledge that there is some frustration on the commission about the time that is taken, but it's taken us six months just to get started, and we believe that we'll need at least six months additional time to finish the work of the commission. You'll continue to hear us talk about the additional time that we'll need, but we certainly will need additional time to complete our work. I want to make room for any other commissioners that wanted to speak about that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I echo your sentiments, the concerns that many of us have felt from day one, that as the commission was constructed in such a way that we could not even begin to meet as a body until after we were sworn in, and have since had to go through the state for every approval when it comes to hiring, as well as to contracting. That's that has slowed us down tremendously. I can speak from experience, having chaired the New York City Racial Justice Commission, a very different experience. When the New York City Racial Justice Commission was created, the staff was already in place. We were able to hire some people, but the staff was there to get us going from day one. Looks very different here. And when you have to go through the state, request for proposals, request for hiring process, and you have to work with state agencies and get budget approvals, hiring one person can take literally 90 to 120 days, as we're now experiencing. And so for this reason, and and other reasons, it is imperative that this commission be given an extension of time to complete its work. We take this work very seriously. We take our responsibility to the New York State body, not just the legislative and executive bodies, but more importantly, to the people of this great state. And so we are going to be quite zealous and, you know, vehemently at every turn, push for an extension of time to complete this critical work. I just want to acknowledge the chair has, you know, been on top of things from day one, seeking to dot all i's and cross all t's and move as quickly as she can to achieve the necessary hires, various appointments, as well as vendor contracts. But we've been constrained, and for that reason, we need an extension of time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to also address the question. And also to echo Jennifer Jones Austin in her commendation to you in terms of really crossing the t's and dotting the i's. I think it becomes important because reparations is an issue, as many of you know, that has been controversial over the years, but it is no longer a fringe issue. Reparations is an issue, an idea whose time has come. And a lot of labor, a lot of effort on the part of those who have been acknowledged, and the legislature went into making this happen. However, we do not want to be set up to fail. So it can be said, well, you know, we, you know, we 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 cut them a check and gave them time, and they didn't do very much, and that's what happens when you talk about the reparations issue. So we don't want that to happen. Literally, if we're looking at how reparations is evolving nationally, California spent time, it was, in some ways, prepared better in some respects. I'm not saying that to criticize anyone. I'm just saying that as a matter of fact. California is a big state, and as California goes, they say sometimes, so go the nation. Well, New York is a big state. And the nature of what happened in in New York State, what has transpired here, is worthy of serious, serious examination and deliberation because people think that enslavement was only down south. What we are going to unearth and some of what you know is that it was also up south in ways that really, really are significant and demand repair. So I just want to add my voice to this, so that you will join with us in spreading the word among your networks and your organizations that we need an extension so that we can do a qualitative job, and we commit to doing that job.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just want to make room if there's anything that the commissioners on Zoom want to share before I move forward and talk about our path forward. Madam Chair?
Oh, sorry.
Go right ahead, Commissioner.
Linda Brown Robinson, I will echo the same sentiments. I actually had someone call me today to ask me what was the movement and what was going on, and I said we actually need an extension. So I fully endorse that we get an extension. And I don't want to recommend the timeframe, the time length, but we definitely need, because we are hamstrung and we are continuing to be hamstrung by not having the proper standard. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to acknowledge, I'm sorry, Commissioner Daniel Favors.
Very briefly, Madam Chair, just appreciation for getting this on the record. As you may recall, at the very beginning, there were several comments and concerns about the slow nature and the lack of adequate preparation to get this process started. So very much appreciative of this and looking forward to hearing what the next steps forward are to formally request said extension of time, particularly in light of the fact that the legislative session will be beginning shortly.
Thank you, Commissioner. I want to acknowledge our path forward, but while before I do that, I just want everyone to know that there is a sign-in sheet going around for individuals that want to make public comment at this public comments, a public hearing session that is going around. And if you haven't signed in, please sign in. So our path forward is that, one, we're going to finalize the contractor roles for the historian, the researcher, the general counsel. We're also expecting to onboard our executive director mid-2020, January. Also incorporate the public feedback that we're getting at the hearings into the recommendations and reporting, and also develop actionable plans for the commission. Additionally, we want to acknowledge that we want to continue to provide transparency to our community. That is why we have the website that's available. We have a call-in number for individuals. We also want to acknowledge that we have much work to do. We have much work to do for the commissioners, but we cannot do this work alone, and I'm grateful to all of the commissioners for their commitment and their hard work. So thank you. I want to make room because I have one of our commissioners joining, and so I'll pause for one second. But I also want to acknowledge that we have the New York City Council Speaker, Adrian Adams is here. So welcome her as well. So you heard her voice online, Lorie Daniel, Commissioner Lorie Daniel Favors, but she is here live and in person. So thank you for being here. Thank you. We can also give her a round of applause. We are glad she made it in the rain. Next, we're going to move on to the next session for subject section, subject matter expert engagement strategy update, and I will look to the Subcommittee to provide that report. Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Chair. Um, you did convene the Subcommittee at our last meeting, and we have been working hard. Um, the Subcommittee is comprised of myself, Dr. Daniels, and Commissioner Daniel Favors. We've, um, collected a group of names from the full Commission, those who desire to submit potential experts to come and share their testimonies, um, from their expertise. We came up with a rubric to identify those who we would be bringing forth to the full Commission, um, soon, hopefully. We're still doing that work. We've met at least seven times, I believe, and the work is really good work, and I think it's been valuable work for us to bring in the experts in each category, um, that will help to make our case, as Senator Sanders said earlier. We have to examine several, uh, elements of the harms, and we've chosen and we've selected some who are well-named notable, who are very notable throughout the country and some internationally, and then some who are more local. Dr. Daniels has actually gone a step further on his own to categorize for us, and is somewhat synergistic, somewhat synergistic with the working proposal we had, um, before, but he sort of drilled down, and it's made our work easier to put those potential experts into, um, the categories that we believe are what we should be looking forward to. I don't know if Dr. Daniels wanted to speak to his memo and the categories, or you, how did you want, you want to go ahead and do that?
Thank you very much, Commissioner Hawkins, Reverend Hawkins, Reverend Dr. Hawkins. Uh, what we're attempting to do is to systematize the work, um, but let me just also comment on the experts, because we also wanted to recognize that we have tremendous assets right here in the state, that we can reach for renowned people from across the country, but we also have great institutions and great resource persons right in this, here in the state, so we put a priority on that. When we say categorization, we want to make sure that we, we go, we examine certain critical areas for our own education, but also for the education of the public. For example, it becomes important to have an understanding. Very often, the question is, "What is reparations? What are the historical precedents? Where did it come from?" Well, we have, uh, we, one of the, uh, areas of consideration will be just that, to have experts come before us and lay out that information, so we'll have, um, that framework. Uh, and it's important to note that this is, that reparations is rooted in international law. This is not some new novel concept. Secondly, what are some of the injury areas? Because when you're talking about reparations, it's about injury, it's about harm, and then how to remedy those harms, and to make sure that they're not repeated, and things along those lines. Um, and in order to do that, we need to have a history. What is the history of enslavement and its legacies in the state of New York? And by legacies, we mean that not only is our reparations due for enslavement, it is for all of the manifestations, all of the legacies that have occurred. And there are a lot of people who don't maybe grasp that. That's why the educational process becomes important. So for example, we certainly want to look at the issue of displacement of communities. Uh, as many of you know, there were whole communities that were ravaged and displaced, uh, in the state. Uh, gentrification, urban renewal, the war on drugs, um, the whole issue of sacred sites, that, like the burial grounds all across this, this state. There are burial grounds and places that, that need to be excavated and resurrected. So we would, we've established these different air, health, education, we've established these different areas so that we can systematically go through these areas, have public hearings across the state to hear from experts, but at the end of the day, also, as we're going to hear, as we are going to do it here today, to hear from you. Because at the end of the day, much of the expertise is buried right in our community. It is buried in your memory and your experiences, and we certainly want to hear that. So it's, it's that kind of process that we're working on, and, um, I'm proud to be working with two other Commissioners who are helping to put that forward, and, uh, I think we'll look for, I think you'll be proud of the work that we're doing in terms of its educational, uh, and action-oriented value.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next, we're going to move on to the discussion of work groups to assist the Commission. We brought this up at our last meeting, and it was not, um, approved, but I'd like to bring it back to the floor, Commissioners, because we heard in Buffalo that there are work groups that want to work alongside the Commission and help us to get our work done faster, um, more hands. We know the expression, "Many hands make light work." Um, and so there are work groups that have approached the Commission about working alongside us, so wanted to bring that back to the floor about how we plan to handle work groups and acknowledge work groups that are doing similar work but want to partner with the Commission.
Well, I thought it was a great idea for, um, when you first introduced it, um, but I did share some concerns that were raised there. I believe in, if we're just working within the timeframe that we've been given, excuse me, we actually need the work of others who are doing the same work outside of the Commission. And I have absolutely no problem working alongside other groups if it will make our claim and our, um, recommendation stronger, and even if they've done some of the work that we don't have to rely only on our experts, but they will be those who are on the ground, like Dr. Daniels said, and even like what we did here in Buffalo, some of those stories, um, their stories matter, and I'm all in favor of work groups.
One of the things that, thank you, Commissioner, one of the things that we talked about was having a memorandum of understanding with work groups, so we clearly understand the work that they're doing, what they're not doing, and what we are doing. And so that's clear about the roles of the Commission and the work group.
So I believe that I was the one who once before voiced some concerns, and, uh, my concerns remain, uh, they have not been addressed. The legislation does not provide for formal work groups. Uh, so unless we can dot the i's and cross the t's, which I'm known to say as a lawyer, uh, to ensure that we are not in any way, uh, corrupting the process by giving undue influence to work groups that are not, uh, provided for by legislation, we need to be very careful. I'm very much concerned that, uh, often you have formal work groups come for, will come forward, they, that come forward, they have position, they have ideas, they have thoughts, they've worked to, uh, you know, make those positions and thoughts firm, and then if you join with them and you don't have the checks and balances, you now have people, again, who may have undue influence on this body. If this body does not have the legislation, the authority to have formal work groups, you have to be very careful. That can actually thwart the process. In my experience, having now served on, uh, two city commissions, one state commission, uh, prior to this, having served numerous capacities with, uh, government bodies, boards, task forces, and the like, often we look to experts to provide us with information, but there is no one entity that has any more authority or engagement. You have to be very, very, very careful about that, especially if you do not have a formalized vetting process. That is my concern.
Lynda Brown Robinson, please. Is it appropriate that I?
Commissioner, yes, Commissioner Brown Robinson, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
Uh, I, I guess I have the same concerns, and we were all vetted to be a part of this process, and, uh, these people who do not know that could, and I'm not saying they are, so I want you all to understand, they could have their own agenda, um, and we're all on, basically, on one accord, but I would say I am not on board, uh, with, with work groups. Uh, they can submit their materials, they can submit their comments, their recommendations, et cetera, but, uh, my, uh, thoughts would not need to endorse this, uh, extra bodies on board with us.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Has there been some change in our understanding as to the role that the work groups would play? Has there been some proposed process that was put forward to vet said groups in the last, since, in the time since our last meeting?
Uh, there, we have been approached by two groups. Um, I don't have the process in front of me to outline it, but I believe that we should look at it. This is my recommendation, that we look at how they propose to work at us, with us, and then, um, determine if that is something that we want to do as a Commission. But when we were in Buffalo at the public hearing, we heard several times that there are work groups that want to work alongside the Commission to help us complete our work.
I would suggest that in light of the fact that we have yet to fully staff, which means we as individual Commissioners would be the ones charged with interacting with said work groups, in light of the fact that we are already behind schedule, I think it would be highly inappropriate and inopportune at this time to suggest that we create an additional process, which goes above and beyond the scope for which we were commissioned, to establish some additional process, uh, for us to engage formally with work groups, particularly because any expertise, any suggestions, any indication, um, that they would need to communicate to us, they have every opportunity to do so, along with the rest of the public. And so at this point, um, as we do not have a formal process, we are at the bare minimum of staffing. We are already in need of a formal request to extend time, which while we have all heard has been encouraged, is not guaranteed. I would strongly suggest we avoid, um, adding to our, our, our work. Um, quite frankly, I don't even know that we have the capacity to do so, considering this is outside the scope. Uh, we have enough on our hands at this point, and reintroducing a topic like working groups without a process, without any guidance, without any legislative authority seems a real inopportune, or, um, and it would be an unfortunate use of time.
Thank you, Commissioner. So I want to make, um, hearing some of the opposition and the support, how do you all suggest that we work with work groups that are proposing to support the Commission? Dr. Daniels?
Well, I, I, I think that's relatively easy, actually. I mean, I think that, I mean, reflecting on it, I, I share the uneasiness about this, having watched, um, uh, the goodwill of some groups, um, penetrate organizations, people have different motives and so forth, and it requires really establishing prism, uh, a rubric, almost like we've done for experts in order to deal with that, and it is a matter of time. But if we need help, or if we want to have a specific agency work with us, it seems to me that we have the ability to do that. I mean, we can simply ask a particular agency or a particular individual by the consent of this Commission to take on a body of work. But to have a whole series of working groups, uh, being powered is, again, an, an area that is fraught with some potential, um, problems that we don't need to wrestle with at this stage of development, particularly given the fact that we're already behind schedule.
Are you all open to working with other Commissions that are doing similar work?
Can you define working with?
I'm sorry?
Can you define what you mean by working with other Commissions?
Partnering to do the work. So if they're doing something similar related to reparations, and maybe it's the research part of the history of New York, or maybe it's the, um, the, some of the injustices, and they're outlining that work already, sharing research, are you opposed to that?
Is there some reason they would not be able to submit that along with the rest of the community?
I'm sure we could.
I'm just very concerned about giving additional weight to, uh, insight beyond what we already have established as it pertains to receiving testimony, either in person or in writing. I, I'm curious as to whether or not there's something else that you envision happening there.
I think that there can be an opportunity for hearing the concerns, if there's an opportunity, if we have a group that wants to work with us, we look at that and see how they can work alongside us, but maybe not in official, like we agreed to not have official work groups for the Commission.
And then I'd like to reiterate, it looks as if we have a solution in search of a problem here. I mean, we, we can do that. We have, we, we have, we have the ability right now to say that there is X institution, and some of that's embodied in the expert list. You know, I, I raised, for example, on the level of history, we can bring an outside historian, but we also know that the New York, uh, Historical Society is an outstanding institute. So we don't have to have a work group to do that. We can agree by this, in, in this Commission, that we would like to work with, have them produce a body of work that we can, uh, we can review. We are hiring a his, a historian and a researcher to help with that process. We also identified the fact that we have CUNY, we have SUNY, we have all of these think tanks and bodies that we can designate to work with us. But to create a separate group of, a separate set of entities, of work groups that are out here, that people would be involved with, that Commissioners have to work with as well, that, that's a layer of, of work and a layer of involvement that it seems to be, to be unnecessary that we have a way of dealing with it very expeditiously.
So it sounds like what we can do is give that, if there is a body that has some work that we're interested in, we can submit that to the committee, the Subcommittee that's already working on the expert list?
Or just submit their materials to the Commission in the way that the public has been asked to, I would suggest.
Um, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Can you? Can you reshare with, um, us all your vision, as you have done something similar before in Rochester?
Sure. Um, in Rochester, New York, and it certainly wasn't my vision, but this is what we've done in Rochester, New York. Um, there was a Commission for Race and Structural Equity, and there were work groups that worked alongside of the Commissioners that helped with tasks, whether it was history, whether it was looking at redlining, whether it was looking at injustices and inequities in employment and housing. Those work groups were community members, like our audience members here, that had experience, um, lived experience, that were working in this work, that can provide, um, information and, um, that could be validated that we use, that was used to inform the report. And from that report, there were 200 recommendations on how we advance equity in the community of Rochester, New York. And from that, um, right now, today, the Urban League of Rochester, my organization, where I lead, I'm serve as the President and CEO, we lead the second phase of the work, where we develop CART teams, and those are community advancing recommendation teams, and they're community members that are charged with the work of continuing to advance the recommendations. So that's similar work, and, and that was one of the things that I was thinking, that there were so many community members that we were hearing that said, "Hey, I want to be part of this work." And as you said, Dr. Daniels, they can submit work online, of course, but I know that there are groups that are working on history, that are working on employment, that are working on redlining, that we may want to partner with, particularly that are doing work that we will find useful to inform our recommendations.
I very much appreciate the points that you're making, Madam Chair. The challenge is, when you say there are so many groups, when we consider that we have 62 counties across the state of New York, uh, we have millions of individuals, uh, and in, and we have thousands of institutions, we have to be very careful about partnering with groups, uh, and making sure that we, you know, we're listening to some, and we're not necessarily leaning in and listening and getting as much information from others, which is why what you seek to do is establish expert lists. You have public hearings where people come and express their views and their thoughts. You may do follow-up with individuals and with institutions if you don't have all the information that you need in that moment. People are able to submit written reports and recommendations, but it's a way to ensure full transparency and equal opportunity in the sharing of information. I go back to, if it was desired at the outset that we have work groups that we partnered with, that should have been put, put into the legislation to avoid this, this issue at this particular point. I am very much concerned, and I'm sure we all on this board are, this Commission, with the integrity of this process, and that it not be in any way tainted by any suggestions of some individuals or institutions having greater influence than other individuals and institutions. The way that you control for that is by having a fully open and transparent process. 62 counties, probably thousands of people with thoughts and ideas, lived experiences, lots of history. You have to, you have to have a structure that allows for the thoughts and opinions of anybody and everybody who wants to weigh in to do that, and that is why we actually and everybody who wants to weigh in to do that, and that is why we actually have, we're setting up an executive director with staff. They will develop that framework and manage that process. But I think we send ourselves down a dark road that puts us, that opens us up for criticism. If you start aligning with work groups and partnering with individuals, some and not others, and then people say, well, where's my voice? And why did this one get three and four conversations? Or why did they get to write the report in such a way? We were not set up to have formal work groups or partnerships. It was not in the legislation. I think we should be very, very, very mindful of that.
Madam Chair, I would also just put us in remembrance of the fact that we have also received a $5 million budget to execute this work. We do not have within that budget capacity to compensate any of these working groups, which are largely comprised of community folks who are very informed and very passionate, but who we should not rely upon to carry the substantive understandings that come through this process. I would strongly encourage that we continue to staff up. As you noted, it can take anywhere from three to four months for that process to happen. We have now identified an executive director. I would strongly suggest that we commit to getting the support for that executive director that is needed, and that we expend the proper resources to make sure that we have the intellectual bandwidth, the research muster and strength, and the expertise necessary to continue with this process. But I would just, in light of all of the concerns, the fact that there is no process, this is not authorized by the legislation, and in this new political era in which we find ourselves, we are essentially a lawsuit or two away from allegations of invalidity of this body. I would strongly suggest we conclude this conversation, to the extent that there is nothing else that needs to be said, and if there is, I will yield to that, but we certainly do not want to open ourselves up to critique beyond what we have already received and will continue to as a result of this process. It is not authorized. We do not have a plan to allow it to happen in a meaningful substantive way, and we have a structure that we need to finalize and get into place so that the team hired to do this work and which has been properly charged through the legislation can get started.
Thank you, Commissioner. So hearing from my fellow commissioners, we will yield, and I want to just acknowledge that Commissioner Linda Tarrant-Reed has walked into the room, and we can give her an opportunity to introduce herself.
I'm sorry I'm late. Traffic, weather, all those requirements, but look at this crowd. Queens, you are doing it. We are very happy to be here, going around the state, educating people about what our charge is, and as you see, we're still in the process of formulating some of it, and I know my fellow commissioners have spoken about the challenges, so I will not go there. My opinion about work groups is that work groups can be used sparingly. I think the foundation of the legislation is a report. We are supposed to gather information that talks about the impact of the institution of slavery on African-American residents of New York State. Slavery started in Manhattan in the 1620s and ended formally in New York in 1827. So our charge is to, you know, make sure that information is out there for the public to understand our history, and then talk about the impact that the institution of slavery had on the residents of New York State. And that's across the board. That's education, housing, black wealth, it's everything. So healthcare, environmental. So we need experts to work with us in all of those categories and formulate information that's backed up by data. It's not just sitting here saying that, you know, my neighbor, you know, went to the bank, didn't get a loan. You know, there are groups that have amassed this information. We can tap into those groups. The information is out there. Mass incarceration of our black folks, all that information is out there. So that is the information that we have to fashion and put into a report to submit to the governor and legislature, and recommendations go along with that.
Thank you, Commissioner. So one of the things that I plan to do is take, and thank you, let's acknowledge her. Yes, thank you. You all appreciate the water. Hearing what was said and the recommendations of Dr. Daniels and the recommendations of Dr., I'm sorry, Commissioner Daniel Favors, we will yield this conversation, and my hope is that when Dr. Chisholm Straker is on board, we can come back with the full process with some of the recommendations that we heard, so we can come back to this, revisit this conversation of how we will work with work groups. The next thing on the agenda is the-
I'm sorry, I just need to clarify something. So we're going to revisit this yet a third time? The work groups?
We're going to revisit it because we did hear some recommendation from Dr. Daniels of how we could do it, and we also don't have a plan, and we don't have a staff. And so I think there are ways that we can work with work groups, not in the same capacity that I described, but just with Dr. Daniels described.
Understood.
Next, we're going to move to the attendance policy discussion, and I'm going to ask that we table that for the next meeting, because we're not, I did not provide the policy for all the commissioners to review today, and we are going to make room for our public hearing. Is that okay with all the commissioners here? So with that, before we adjourn, I'm sorry.
I just was waiting, and it's okay for you to move on.
Yes, Commissioner, go ahead. Please wait in.
I did. You asked for permission to wait, to move on, and I was giving my permission.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate that. Before we adjourn, I want to make room and acknowledge, as I acknowledged early, we have Assemblymember Salajah here, and I want to make room for her to provide some comment and feedback. She is a sponsor of the reparations bill, and we are so glad that she was able to come today. I think here's, if you want to go right here.
Greetings, brothers and sisters. Today is a joyous day, and as I look across the room, it gives me hope to know that together, unified, we can close the disparities in our communities. But it's up to us as individuals to collectively get together and to change the dynamic and systems in our communities. So I want to first give acknowledgement and praise to the commissioners, all who are up here on the dance and as well as via Zoom. I thank the commissioners, because more than a year ago, a year and a half ago, this was a dream. This was a conversation. This was a fight amongst legislators to see whether or not we should implement a commission on legislation. And no, especially to the young people here, the legislative process is not easy. It's difficult at times, but if you know how to work it, you can get things done. And so the work is ours. The commission is currently convening, having conversations, going around the state, and they're hearing from you. They want to hear from you, and I encourage you to speak your truths and your experiences, but also to get your friends and family to be a part of this process. Even if they cannot participate in public hearings as an in-person participation, they can write their testimony. They can submit it online, right? You can do that. And so I encourage you to submit your ideas, submit your truths, and get all of the ideas on paper, because we have nine smart individuals right here who I know will be able to get the report done, even though I know it's a difficult charge. And we're listening to their questions, their concerns, but I'm just appreciative that this is an independent body. Usually when commissions are created, they are under the purview of their local governments, and they don't have autonomy. They're given staff, they're given resources, and it's kind of, there's an unintended or unspoken result. But here in this commission, they have true independence. They can hire their own staff, they can have their own public hearings, but they need you to give them the knowledge and information that you have so that we can change our communities. So whether it's education, healthcare, closing the generational wealth gap, ensuring that we have a pathway to homeownership, there are so many ideas that I know is in your head, but we need to get them out on paper. So I just thank you so much for the opportunity. You know, it's always been a pleasure to sponsor this legislation, and I just want to also give thanks to the members of the Black Hispanic African Asian Caucus, as well as Speaker Hasty and Majority Leader Stuart Cousins for believing in this dream, and also Vivian Cook. She's my lady, she's my model right here. Vivian, you're, sorry, Assemblywoman Cook? You know, please, I appreciate everything that you do for not only the community, but for young women like myself, being an inspiration. So thank you, Ms. Cook. So welcome, everyone. I look forward to your comments, and thank you again to the commission. This is very exciting, and I wish you best of luck.
Thank you, Assemblymember Salajah. Just want to make a couple acknowledges before we open the floor for new business from the commissioners. I want to acknowledge that Linda Tajani, 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 I'm so sorry, Executive Director of the New York City Commission on Racial Equity is in the room. Thank you for being here. Also, of course, the great Assemblywoman Cook is here. Let's give her a round of applause. And Councilwoman Williams is here, and thank you for being here.
Madam Chair, point of order. I just wanted to revisit something that, just so that I'm clear and so that the record can properly reflect. By my count, it appears that we have a majority of commissioners who do not want to revisit the issue of the working groups, and I'm sorry to have to raise this again, but this is really something I'm hoping to avoid in the future. I would like to, I believe if we're going to table this for another discussion, there has to be a motion and a vote to do so. Otherwise, I would actually like to introduce a motion that we have settled this issue since we settled it at the last meeting and close it to future discussions so that we are able to move forward.
So thank you, Commissioner. Let's take a vote, and I just want to acknowledge that one of our commissioners is on the way in the room, but I wanted us to take a vote, and so if there's a motion, is there someone that wants to make a motion that we have, or that we have continued the conversation of work groups or not continue the conversation? Do you want to make a motion to discontinue the conversation?
I move that we adhere to the decisions made at the last meeting, wherein we restricted ourselves to the capacity enumerated in the legislation with regards to the absence of work groups being included, that we no longer revisit this topic and move forward with doing the work of the commission.
So a motion has been made. It's a second. Let's do a second.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You have three votes?
I think you have four.
Four to discontinue?
Linda abstain.
Linda. Commissioner Brown Robinson, did you hear the motion on the floor? Commissioner Brown Robinson? So there are four ayes. Oppose? There's one, I oppose.
I abstain.
And one abstention. Commissioner Brown Robinson? So from that-
I'm having a little trouble with my internet, and you all blanked out for quite some time.
There's a motion on the floor you're abstaining?
Yeah, because I could not hear unless you want to repeat it. If not, I will not waste the commission and the public's time, and I will just abstain because I could not hear.
Can you repeat the motion?
I move that we continue as decided at the last business meeting to move forward without a formal working group process, which would exceed our scope under the legislation.
The motion was seconded. We've had four yays, one nay, and one abstention.
How do you vote, Commissioner?
Yea.
There are four yays?
Five.
I'm sorry, five. Five yays, I'm sorry. So the motion has been carried.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do we have any new business before the commissioner? Yes, Commissioner?
Yes, I have said it before, but I'm saying it again on behalf of any within the community who are unable to make public hearings, and when we're having our meetings, we have to have a process in place, hopefully by January meeting, whereby they can call in or submit their questions through a Zoom so that their voices can be heard. On a day like today, many who probably had planned to be in attendance will not be able to be in attendance because it's inclement weather, but that should not stop us from being able to provide a vehicle through which they can provide their testimonies if they would desire to do so. So I'm asking that the commission be expedient in getting that in place, hopefully for the January meeting, but as soon as possible.
Agreed.
Any comments?
Madam Chair, would you repeat the essence of it? I couldn't quite grasp it. I'm sorry.
Sorry. My voice is really messed up, but what I'm trying to say is that there are many commission, many community members who may have planned to be here today, or when we were in New Rochelle, or any of the other meeting places, and for whatever reason, they're unable to be here to provide their public testimony at our public hearing, and we don't want to nullify them, their voices, by not having a mechanism in place. I believe that we should be able to provide that type of technology for those who would like to provide their public testimonies, that they might be added to our official records, and I believe that we need to work expediently to make that happen so that their voices will not be left out of the whole process.
So with that, I agree that all voices should be heard, but we also have to have a process to register them, have the staff to do that, and so I hope that when we have staff to do that, we can open up that process. But as of right now, we are not, we don't have the capacity to do that.
I don't know. Can, is this something that, and we have two lawyers up here, I don't know, we need someone to man a Zoom where they can submit questions. This is what I'm saying. Can, do we have the capacity to have someone man the questions, give them to us during the public hearings? Do we have a mechanism? Can we do that? Do we have to have a paid staff in order to make this happen for the community?
I think just putting together the meetings are a challenge in itself, and I think we just need to have someone that can. I agree. I don't disagree. I just think we need to have a, whether it's a consultant that can do that, and so we can look at that for the next meeting. I'm not in disagreement, but I certainly don't think we have the capacity as we are today to do that.
Madam Chair, I think that I certainly agree with the idea, we want to maximize input and get the lived experience of people involved. And one of the things I would suggest is California went through a process, and we might want to consult with the persons who were involved with the community engagement component to see how that was handled, because it is important to have a process of registering people. It's also important to have a process by which the same individuals don't come back over and over and over and over and over again. don't come back over and over and over and over and over again, you know? Uh, because they want to give the impression that they represent millions of people when they represent themselves perhaps. So we want to get, make sure that we get the input. Now, I'm a strong proponent of these public forums and public hearings. In fact, um, I hope we're able to reexamine it again, because I think the time becomes important. I think evenings and Saturdays are better than in the middle of the day and all those things, we really want to maximize that. But I also agree that we need to take this up, look at how it can best be done, and then, and put a system into place so that we get the maximum amount of input from, uh, our community. So, uh, I'm in favor, but I do think it needs to be systematized and organized appropriately.
And if I can add, Commissioner, that we do have a comms on our website. We have a communications firm, RFQ. And the communications firm, one of their charges is to create a community engagement strategy, so that certainly can be part of their work, that they put together a process for us to hear all voices. But that, that, um, job, that proposal is on our website right now at NY.gov backslash reparations.
Madam Chair, I'm looking forward to the day when you are not carrying all of this. Uh, this is the role of the Executive Director, to ensure that the, uh, commission is properly staffed, uh, for purposes of advancing the work, the substantive nature of the work, but also handling these administrative and coordination responsibilities. Uh, there are many examples to which we can look. Uh, across the nation and here in New York City, uh, every time the Board of Correction needs, every time the City Planning Commission needs, uh, every time the New York City Racial Justice Commission met, uh, there were organized structures in place, frameworks, for ensuring that individuals who want to provide testimony have the response, have the opportunity to do so. So we have these systems in place, we just need to be, uh, they need to be woman-powered, not manpowered. They need to be women and manpowered, they need to be they-powered.
Yes.
And we can make sure that happens. But, uh, there's been a lot that has fallen to you. And we will soon have an Executive Director who will hire staff, and we will make sure that these manners are handled.
Thank you, Commissioner. So Commissioner Jenkins, I just want to acknowledge that I am in agreement, we are in agreement. We just need to make sure that folks respond to that communication firm proposal, so that they can, um, put together a strong strategy for us. I also want to acknowledge that, um, we have several elected here. Assemblymember Anderson is present, and so I just want to acknowledge, thank you for being here. Um, and I also want to acknowledge for those that missed that we have selected an Executive Director. You've heard us talk about that several times tonight. And Dr. Chisholm Straker is here. If you would please stand up, she is the selected candidate. We are waiting to go through the process with the state. It's taken us several months to get here. Once she is officially offered the position, then she will be here leading the charge, and it won't be up to the commission. So I am so glad that Dr. Chisholm Straker is here. Can't wait to give you a hug, we're excited about it. Um, next, I want to make room, if we could please hear from the council speaker as before we adjourn, and make room for the public hearing. And for those that are here in the audience, if you would like to make public comment, please make sure that you sign up. And to the staff that are taking the forms, if you can begin to give those to us, that would be helpful, so we can begin to put together our process. Um, but I want to make room for our council speaker. Adams is here, and we would like to bring you to the microphone. Thank you for being here today.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome, Commissioners, to the Great 28th. We are so happy, uh, to have this forum here this evening, right here in beautiful Rochdale's Grand Ballroom. This is such an important subject matter. It's so important that it has taken us generations to wrap our minds around. It is so important that it has taken us, person after person, panel after panel, group after group, elected official after elected official, committee after committee, to get this thing right. But I tell you, I am so grateful for our New York State elected officials who got this one right. Congratulations to all of you. Particularly my Senator James Sanders and our Assemblymember Michael Salages. For knowing what we needed and the time that we needed it. Everything has its time. And for reparations, it's time. It's time, it's time. And we believe in you, Commissioners, that you will make it happen for all of us finally. Hi, Jennifer, hi, Dr. Daniels. Hi, I've known them for a very long time. But, uh, very, very happy to see this happening. Thank you all, to our elected officials, particularly our Queen Assemblymember, Mother Vivian Cook. Thank you so much for your outstanding leadership. We want you all to enjoy the evening. Please do speak up and let these amazing Commissioners know what is on your mind with regards to reparations. Thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you. Is there any other business of the commission before we adjourn? Again, we want to acknowledge, um, the great work of our Governor Hochul on establishing this commission. We want to give her a round of applause. Also, one- Go ahead.
Madam Chair, query whether we've given any indication as to future dates for meetings? That may have happened while I was gone, but I just wanted to know if we discussed the future calendar.
Can you repeat that, Commissioner? I'm sorry.
Yes, my query is to whether or not we have announced future meeting dates and times in lieu of the calendar being formalized?
That we have, we should have on the website, um, some future meetings. We have, I know our next meeting. Um, we don't have our January meeting posted. Our February meeting, we're hoping to be, um, in Albany, New York, and, and during the caucus, that is our hope. Um, in March, we'll be in Rochester. And then the rest of the meetings are still being laid out, but they are on the, um, commission. And so we, we hope to see you all soon. Um, right now, we're going to take a five-minute break. We're going to make room for our public hearing. We also have our partners here, our local history, that will provide a presentation. If you have not signed up, please sign up for, um, public comment. We appreciate everyone being here. We're going to take a five-minute break. This meeting is now adjourned. Everyone, we have a full agenda. Thank you. If you can all take your seats, please. If you could all take your seats, we have a full agenda, hello. Thank you all for being here, we are excited. We are excited about tonight. We're going to begin with our education session. Thank you, everyone, for taking your seats. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you to everyone that is here. We appreciate all of our individuals that have come out tonight. I want to make room before we begin our education se- session for, um, our elected Nantasha Williams. I just saw her, and now I don't see, okay. I apologize. Want to make room, welcome, and thank you for being here. If we could all take our seats, please.
Yes, I just, and hopefully this is like for public record. Again, hi, I'm Nantasha, Councilmember in the 27th Council District, also Chair of the Civil and Human Rights Committee. And back a few months ago, uh, our Speaker actually, uh, was a huge supporter of passing, uh, slew of bills, in a Juneteenth package of bills. One was a level of reparations for New York City, and then a bill around truth and reconciliation. And we're really excited to work with Linda and the Commission on Racial Equity to realize a lot of these things. But most importantly, and what we're most excited about in the council and on the city level, is to work with you all as you advance your work. Um, it is certainly not our intention to duplicate efforts, to silo efforts. I think this is a wonderful effort, and we all should be in sync and in tandem to the best of our abilities. And just wanted to be on record to say we are, in turn, following your leadership, um, around a lot of the things that you are advancing. And again, we just continue to, to look forward to working with you all as we do things on the city level. Hopefully, we can support your work, specifically, uh, as you look at things in New York City. And just again, wanted to publicly thank the Speaker, um, who really, which is, this is difficult to do, and we typically do not do this in a council where we negotiate bills way before, uh, they are actually to pass. And so I just want to thank the Speaker and her leadership, uh, for our ability to pass a suite of bills, really seeking to provide support for black people in New York City. Uh, most importantly, yes, thank for that. And we look forward to what comes out of this, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. We are delighted to begin our public hearing session with an education, um, segment. And we have our part, our, um, colleagues from our local history, and they are part of the organization CCSI Coordinated Care Services. And their mission is to provide support and empower students and community members with the tools to engage their own local history of civil rights through inquiry, equity, and civil action. And today- And today, we have Shane Wiegand and Keisha James, who are the co-directors of our local history at CCI. And they are going to provide us some history of the legacy of slavery here in New York. We also have with them is their colleague, Justin Murphy. He is the communications coordinator at our local history. And so want to make room for them without further ado. If you have not signed up for public comment, please do, because immediately following this education session will be public comment. So let's give our local history a round of applause.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Keisha James, and I co-direct our local history. Like Dr. Hawkins said, we are a teacher-led organization that really helps community members, students, educators engage with and own our local history of civil rights through inquiry, equity, and civic action. First and foremost, I just want to thank the commissioners for having us here tonight. Thank you so much, Commissioner Hawkins, Commissioner Jenkins. I'm gonna try to get all the names I can, so just bear with me. Commissioner Daniel Favors, Commissioner Austin, Commissioner Brown Robinson, Commissioner Tarrant Reed, council member Adams, Senator Sanders, Assemblymember Salages, Cook, and Anderson. And I apologize if I missed anyone else. We're truly grateful to be here with you all today to share a little bit about the history of enslavement, particularly in this area. So I will tell you, we do this work all across New York State, where we do research around the local history of civil rights. And we teach mostly teachers, but we also work with community members on how to teach this in ways that are safe and empowering to our students. Having students understand that this has happened right here in our community, but they have the tools and strategies to engage with things that they are passionate about today. If there's an issue that they are passionate about, we give them the tools, and we help them, guide them, as they start to lean into creating a community that is more equitable. And I'm really excited to be sharing this time with my colleague, Justin Murphy.
Thank you, Keisha. Hi, everybody. My name's... My name's Justin Murphy. I'm the Research and Communications Coordinator for our local history. And I grew up in a mostly white suburb outside of Rochester. And my impression for the first 20 years of my life or so was that race and racism were problems that other people had to deal with. That was unfortunate, but it was, as far as I could tell, something that bad people had done a long time ago, and it didn't really have anything to do with my life. And really, my only responsibility, I thought, was that when I come across a person of color, a person who's different from me, it's my... I treat them with respect. But nobody ever kind of explained to me why it was that I didn't usually come across people who looked different from me. Nobody really explained to me how my community came to be the way that it was. And it wasn't until I started working as a journalist in Rochester that I started to put some of those pieces together and kind of contextualize myself in my community and in my country, and understand why, for example, in the white suburb where I grew up, there were no people of color for me to be cordial to. And so that was a long and meaningful development process for me. I deepened my learning when I wrote a book about the history of school segregation in Rochester from 1818 until the present. And that is what brought me to our local history, is that I've really got... Learning those facts and being able to piece that together, not just having it taught to me, but really understanding it was so important in my growth and changing the way that I see the world, that I really have a passion for sharing that out with other people in the brilliant way that Keisha and my other colleagues do. So that's part of what we're hoping to share with you all tonight. Keisha's gonna go through a little bit. And then we've got some exhibits out on the walls there. It's what we call a gallery walk that we hope you'll do along with us. And we'll kind of talk it out. It won't take all too long. And then we'll get to your public comments, because we know that that's what you all are here for. But thank you, first of all, very much for having us.
All right. So just a quick little background around who we are. Again, we talked about, we do this all across the state. When we're working with young people, we're always gonna focus on checking in with them, seeing how they're feeling throughout our time together. Everything we do is inquiry. We never tell students or community members what to think. We put primary sources. We put history in front of folks. And we ask them, well, what are you noticing? What do you wonder? What story is this telling you? What... How is this significant to your life? And then every single one of our units ends with a call to action. We don't want this to just be a history lesson. We truly want this to inform civic action, not only in our state, but across our country. You can go to the next one. So this work isn't just our team at our local history. It truly is elders and youth within our community. We started in Rochester, New York. And it really started because of some of these teens at the top right corner. They started to learn about their local history, and they were really upset when they found out that one of the banks that just gave them bank cards also participated in redlining in our community and caused tons of harm within our community. They gave them bank cards, but they talked about no history of the harm that they have caused in this community. And so that led us to some funding, to be able to hire these teens, to be able to interview elders in their community, to learn about these oral histories, and to put them in a curriculum. So students are learning about people right from their local community. This is our website. We'll make sure that we share this with you. Everything we have is free and open source. There is no gatekeeping here. We have all of the teacher directions, all of the slides, all of the handouts are available, and they are available all across the state, as well as the Rochester area. So we'll make sure that you are getting a copy and access to that as well. You can go to the next one. All right. So I'm gonna have y'all talking to each other today. We're gonna be, like Justin said, doing a gallery walk. And so we have some group norms that'll just set a foundation for how we want to have conversations today. I'm gonna ask you to speak your truth today, continue to use I statements, stay as engaged as you can. I saw a lot of us had some food, and we're having an opportunity to fellowship with each other. Acknowledge that we might experience some discomfort today. Leaning into what we're feeling and pushing our growing edges. Acknowledging intent and owning our impact. And so asking for clarity, if as you're going around today, you hear a comment being made, you know, being curious about that, maybe I'm a little uncomfortable with what you said. Could you explain? Taking a look at... Just expressing gratitude and committing to reflection. Or, you know, this is a first draft statement, being curious. If you're not sure what to say, but you want to share something. You know, this is a first draft thought. It's letting the folks in the room know that you're still kind of thinking about what you want to say, but you still want to share. Accept and expect non-closure. We've got about 35 minutes with you all. Normally, we do this in three hours, but we really slow it down and break it down. So we're just giving you a little taste, a little appetizer tonight. Respecting that we're all in different places on our journey. We want to lean into curiosity and away from judgment. And a supportive equity of voices in the room by practicing a move-up, move-back approach. So just making space for folks to share in the room. And then I just want to center us with this quote from James Waldwin that says, "Not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced." You know, this commission is tasked with a huge lift, and we are here to support that, so that when you're going back and you're sharing what recommendations from the community members are, you all have the knowledge of your local history here. I know so many experts are in the room, so many of you we've learned from as we've done this research, and we're excited to share just some more of this history, so folks can be, again, more informed about what's happened right here in this area. So this is our inquiry question for our time together today. How does understanding our local history of enslavement, redlining, and civil rights inform our actions today to repair past harm and make New York a more equitable place? So we're gonna start with some more current day information. So right here, you're looking at median household net worth in New York State residents in 2021. So on the left-hand side, you're seeing white... The median white household net worth is $276,900, compared to $18,870 for the median black household in 2021. If we really put that together, that's almost 15 times more wealth for a white household. And if you put it another way, that's for every $1,000 that a white household has in wealth, the median black household has $68.17. There's a legacy here. There's something that we need to pay attention to. One of the things that we want to even think about is just, you know, why is a state called New York anyways? Right? We're thinking a little bit about the history piece of it. So York is a place in England, but New York was specifically named for James, the Duke of York. He later became King James II of England. The Duke of York was one of the most influential people in English history. One of his most consequential actions came in 1662, when he created something called the Royal African Company. James, Duke of York, chartered the Royal African Company. Between 1662 and 1731, the Royal African Company transported about 212,000 kidnapped Africans on its ships, of whom about 44,000 people died during the Middle Passage. Some were branded with the letters D.Y. for Duke of York. No other institution shipped more enslaved Africans to the Americas throughout the history of the transatlantic slave trade. And as long as we're talking about names of places, this is Catherine of... Excuse me. This is Catherine of Braganza. Excuse me. It's been a long day. And Queens, the county of Queens, and the borough of Queens is named after her. She was born into a Portuguese royal family in 1638 and became Queen of England after marrying King Charles II in 1662. Both the Portuguese and the English royal families during the 17th century were deeply invested in enslavement. And she, as a princess, then a queen, benefited enormously from the access to unparalleled wealth and power. So we want to think about these folks, and just one more second. I want to think about these folks, and they did not capture slaves. These folks were individuals. They were human beings. People such as the Duke of York chose to enslave these individuals. Enslavement is not their entire story, so we're gonna share about enslavement today. It is not the entire story of these individuals you're gonna see today. When we think about this and we discuss this with students in the classroom, we do not start with the slave ships, but intentionally start with Africa. We start with thinking about, well, who were these people before they were shipped through the Middle Passage? And I will share with you, as you're getting up and getting ready to do the gallery walk in just a second, the sources that we curated for you today are for adults. A lot of the stuff that you are going to see tonight is not gonna be in our K-12 curriculum, because everything we do is developmentally appropriate. And so we do have levels of... We absolutely tell the truth, but we tell the truth in a way that is safe and empowering to students. So you're gonna see a little bit more grotesque. You're gonna see a little bit more of the brutality in the documents today. But I do want to just note that, and you'll see there's little notes on the ones that we don't use with young people. But I'm gonna show you how we start with students. So we start with Africa. We start with kings and queens. We have them think about religion, power, brilliance, architecture, universities that these individuals had. You have Mansa Musa on the right, the richest man that ever lived, thinking about him causing inflation all across the world when he took his pilgrimage to Mecca. Or Queen Nzinga over here. The next thing that we have students do is we have them do this 3-2-1 partner activity. They get to look at these beautifully rich images all across the continent of Africa, ask what are they noticing, what are they wondering, what's coming up for them? So you can click through some of these, and you'll see some of the images that students get a chance to wrestle with throughout our time and when we're starting this unit. Again, we're starting with culture, with richness, with art, with beauty. We want them to understand, again, more about the individuals, the societies, the cultures that were there. And then after we go into our next day of our unit, and we have some of this stuff printed out for you as well, so we'll make sure we pass this out to you. But the next thing we do, and we actually go into our period of enslavement, we start with vocabulary. And so we shift from the word slave to enslaved person, because nobody was a slave. It was something done to an individual. So our definition to consider is an individual forced to work for no pay and without freedom. So you see Nellie here, that was enslaved by Dee Brain, and Sarah, enslaved by John Vanderbilt, the town clerk of Flushing. So in October 1787, they were accused of burning the house containing the Flushing's town records. And as a result, they were executed or pardoned. So again, that last part, we definitely would not put in for young people, but letting them know that people in our community were absolutely enslaved. On the flip side, we shift from master to enslaver, because enslaver was a choice these individuals made. They chose to buy and sell human beings and force them to work for no pay. This is DeWitt Clinton, who was an influential American politician. He was a U.S. senator. He was mayor of New York City. He was governor of New York. And as governor, he was the driving force behind the construction of the Erie Canal. So a project that transformed the trade and transportation in the United States. And he also chose to enslave human beings in Queens, New York. Our next term, we shift from runaway to freedom seeker. Runaway has this negative connotation, like these individuals were doing something wrong, versus seeking our freedom is every human being's right. So our definition is African Americans who bravely risked their lives to escape from enslavement. So you see this gentleman named George here. He was enslaved in Flushing, and then he sought his freedom in 1774 from Abraham Lawrence, who chose to enslave him. And this is the actual advertisement from when he sought his freedom. Another example of a freedom seeker is James Foreman of Norfolk, Virginia. He crossed the Niagara Falls Suspension Bridge in Canada in 1856. He was one of many freedom seekers who passed through Western New York on their way to Canada. Many of them found refuge in St. Catherine's in Canada. Now we shift from individual actions to systems of power. So this definition is racist policy, any rule or law that creates or upholds inequity between racial groups. So in 1712, the Province of New York's Assembly passed a law that required two-pound security, or $10,000 in 2024 time, or 20 pounds annual fee for manumission, a large financial penalty against enslavers, allowing enslaved people their freedom. So we would say this is a racist policy. All right. So we're gonna have y'all get up and get moving in just a second. So as you go around the room, you'll see that from the back half of the room, there's posters all over. What you're gonna do is you have some stickies in front of you, and you'll need a pen, and I know we've got a couple pens floating around as well. But I want you to think about, as you go around and you look at these different primary sources, I want you to think, what is this document telling us about enslavement and how people resisted? How does this primary source inform our work for reparations? So on your sticky note, you can jot down a notice. You can jot down a wonder. You can jot down a feeling. You can jot down an inference that's coming up. You can make a note of what somebody else said that you liked. So on that sticky, you'll write down a notice, or a wonder, or a feeling, or an inference, and then you'll stick that sticky note right by the picture. Does that make sense to folks? Any questions?
Okay, I'm a logistics guy, so I just passed out the sticky notes. I've got some pens here if you need one. We've also got... So just so you know, there's gonna be a QR code where we're gonna share this entire presentation, everything that you see around here and that we're sharing tonight. So you'll all have that. You can all capture that. If you don't feel like getting up or not able to get up, that's fine. We also have print copies of the whole thing around here. So we've got those up front. We've got pens up front. Everybody can participate as they see fit.
And we'll come back together in about 10 minutes or so. So you can start anywhere in the room you want. Grab your stickies, jot down a notice, a wonder, a feeling. What is this telling you about enslavement? How is this making the case for reparations? Yeah, in case you don't want to walk around. Oh wait, I don't think I gave you some, hold on, I think I only gave you one, you need another one, right? You got two, one. I think there's two there. You know, maybe one, two.
We get two pens.
All righty. We're going to take about three more minutes, about three more minutes to make your way If you can please take your seats, if you can please take your seats. All right, so as you make your way back to your seats, we're just going to quickly go through the last few pieces of our time together, and then we will turn it over to the public forum.
If we can take our seats, thank you, everyone. Thank you for being engaged, thank you for being responsive, and we will now give the floor back to Ms. James, thank you.
All right, so we're going to just quickly go through a couple of those sources that y'all looked at, and then really think about, you know, the legacy of enslavement, how it laid the foundation for redlining and a lot of other inequities within our communities. You can go to the next one. You can keep going. So we'll make sure everybody has that QR code to access this deck as well, but some of y'all saw that the beginning of enslavement right here in New York City in the 1620s that was talked about earlier, and the individuals that actually were enslaved in this area. So you're getting some of the names of the individuals that were here. All right, so we're going to come back together now. This is really important, so really thinking about the beginning, again, early in enslavement, so 1644, the Dutch granted half freedom to some of its company Negroes, but kept their children enslaved. And so we're really appreciative of Commissioner Torrin Reed for sharing this information and just the text that we were able to use to bring some of this information to you all today. And so really thinking about the settlers and the first free black settlement in the US, Little Africa in Lower Manhattan. We talked a little bit about the laws that folks, that were created in New York from 1664 to 1740, so individuals, Africans could not gather in groups of three or more. Trading with free citizens without their enslaver's consent was against the law, even being out past sunset without a candor lantern was against the law. These individuals, at one point, were so cruel that the Duke of York demanded that the colonies pass laws from inhumane severities that were happening to enslaved peoples. Y'all saw some of the census data of how many individuals were enslaved in this area, particularly some of the places where folks were actually sold into domestic labor. You can go to the next one. Enslavers all across New York State, some of y'all saw the names of these individuals, a lot of towns and areas and places that we know and are familiar with, realizing that some of these individuals enslaved other human beings right here in this state and within this community. Again, taking a look at the enslavers in this area, so out of our, out of our senators, 17 out of 24 enslaved human beings. They decided to pass a gradual emancipation act, where they could have freed enslaved children in 1799, but chose to keep individuals enslaved until 1827. For us, it's so important to name the names of people who caused harm in our community, and also name the names of individuals whose stories may not have been told, so that we can share from individuals who were formerly enslaved, telling a little bit more about their life as well. Again, you're seeing us more connection to enslavers right here in Queens. You can keep going. You'll hear from Sojourner Truth, and I do want to just point out, if you notice, there's never any images of ships, there's never any images of people in whips or chains. We want to show people with agency, with dignity. You'll see Sojourner Truth on the cover of her autobiography. That's really important to humanize enslavement for young people when they're learning about this, and for community members as well. Again, this is not all of who they were, but we also want to understand the economics, that she was sold for $100 and some sheep, right? And really having students start to understand this, having people start to understand this in our community. You can go to the next one. The Underground Railroad and the different routes and the different places that took place right here in this area. So this is the Flushing Quaker community that helped to lay the groundwork for abolitionist movement, connecting to early resistance against slavery in the colonies. This meeting house was built in 1694. Or thinking about the AME Zion churches all across the state that were spots on the Underground Railroad, they helped to support individuals as they were making their way to freedom. They became safe havens to connect in the community, to help countless individuals towards their journey to liberation. Or even thinking about the AME Zion church in this area that still stands today. One of the things that we are incredibly proud of is the AME Zion church that still stands in Rochester as well. You know, students can actually go there and visit this area, that is a huge historical marker in our community. Or thinking about the advertisements, again, naming the names of folks, these are real advertisements from local papers of folks looking for freedom seekers. You'll see about Frederick Douglass, Austin Stewart, Austin Stewart was the first black man to own a business in the Rochester area, formerly enslaved in Sodis and Bath, New York, talking about what happened as he went to seek his freedom. And again, you're seeing from his own autobiography, we let students see the language and see the words from individuals who were formerly enslaved. We talked about the gradual emancipation. The resistance in New York City, if people did resist, they did fight back, that there's sometimes this myth of, I hear students, well, why did they let this happen? Like, they didn't. Folks fought back every single day in so many different ways, and sometimes in larger ways, and sometimes in smaller ways as well, but having students understand the resistance that happened day in and day out. Conspiracies that took place, and people who were brutalized or murdered for these conspiracies that may or may not have happened. Thinking about the Fugitive Slave Act that took place as well. And again, we've got some folks that were abolitionists, so David Ruggles, and, you know, being born a free person, but he moved to New York City in 1825, ran a grocery store, anti-slavery newspaper, and helped, had an anti-slavery bookstore. And so we, again, want to share with students and folks in this area about what has happened right here. Or even just thinking about the Northern Prophet. I went to school in Rochester, New York, that's why I was also an educator, and what we were taught was that the Southern people were the bad folks, we were better up here, we were the Northerners, you know, we had the Underground Railroad, we were, we were better. And as I go across the state, this is an education that many folks have been taught. We're thinking about how Northerners profited from enslavement. Enslavement happened right here in New York State. They had these kidnapping clubs where they would illegally kidnap and place people into Thinking about, again, the way that banks, manufacturers, and other New York businesses provided the capital, the equipment, and ultimately the market for enslavement and goods to be produced. And so thinking about, no, you're good, you can keep going. Or again, different ways, so once the transatlantic slave trade became illegal, New York City became the financial capital of the transatlantic smuggling of enslaved Africans. So folks are still coming here, coming right here to the New York City area. With students, again, we, they don't see everything that you would have seen, but what we ask them is, you know, how is understanding the local history of enslavement, redlining, civil rights, how does that inform our actions today? We always ask students to, you know, what's something that resonated with you? What would you share with somebody who was absent? But for you all today, you know, how can these, this history inform our actions to really help repair the past harm and make New York a more equitable place? We always check in and see how folks are doing, so you'll see this at the end, so just want to check in. I know this is heavy, this definitely puts me in the red zone, this is called the zones of regulation, as I look at this really hard history, but at the same time, it also puts me in the green zone because I'm grateful that I get to be here in this space with you all, that hopefully you learn something new, or taking something with you today that you can share out. And so this history isn't hidden, this history isn't something that isn't commonly known. And we're going to shift to thinking about what happened about 90 years later, past enslavement.
All right, so as you heard earlier, enslavement started in New York in 1626 or so and was abolished in 1827, so that's about 200 years, and we're not even quite 200 years past that, right? If you think about it, we're like exactly at the halfway point of enslavement in New York versus not enslavement in New York. But the reason we're here today is that it didn't end in 1827, those effects are ongoing. And we're going to go through pretty quickly some of those effects. This, I'm sure, is a map that you all have seen, this is Queens, and this is when the government comes in and during the Great Depression in 1934, and codifies the racial segregation that already exists in neighborhoods. So we're not only recognizing that it exists, but we're putting the stamp of impremature of the US government on this. And the FHA has the underwriting manual, and it said that there should be restrictions on property to include prohibition of the occupancy, except by the race for which they intended. That's the government saying, not only are we okay with racial segregation, but we insist upon racial segregation if we're going to loan money for homes. And, and so this is, this is us. It was kind of interesting, actually, this particular spot that we're in is, is among the red line, the zones on the map. So we're, as you can see, according to the federal government, 1934, we're in a pretty pitiful spot right here in between the red and the yellow. I don't know, I walked around today, I thought it was kind of nice, but we're going to walk through, we're going to talk through some of these specific places. So Forest Hills, this gets a green, a green description, this is one of the highly regarded areas where they're going to lend money freely. And the reason that they're going to lend money freely, under the clarifying remarks here, is that it's under rigid supervision and restriction. That's referring to racially restrictive covenants. It says in the property covenants, people of color are not allowed to live here, and therefore, it's, it gets the highest rating. Compare that to a place in the, in the red, Jamaica, right near where we are right now, this is deemed hazardous, the federal government is not going to loan here. And the reason, there's an infiltration of Negroes from the East, an infiltration, that's what they mean. This is an interesting one, and this really hammers home the perspective of the federal government at this point. St. Albans is yellow, so that means definitely declining, and the reason says it was formerly an exclusive neighborhood, but the restrictions have expired, and now the community is in slow decline. So you can see the absolute causal relationship that the federal government sees in the way that it decides. We always ask students to, you know, "What's something that resonated with you? What would you share with somebody who was absent?" But for you all today, you know, how can these, this history inform our actions to really help repair the past harm and make New York a more equitable place? We always check in and see how folks are doing, so you'll see this at the end, so just want to check in. I know this is heavy, this definitely puts me in the red zone, this is called the Zones of Regulation, as I look at this really hard history, but at the same time, it also puts me in the green zone because I'm grateful that I get to be here in this space with you all, that hopefully you learn something new or taking something with you today that you can share out. And so this history isn't hidden, this history isn't something that isn't commonly known. And we're going to shift to thinking about what happened about ninety years later past enslavement.
All right. So, as you heard earlier, enslavement started in New York in sixteen twenty-six or so and was abolished in eighteen twenty-seven, so that's about two hundred years, and we're not even quite two hundred years past that, right? If you think about it, we're like exactly at the halfway point of enslavement in New York versus not enslavement in New York. But the reason we're here today is that it didn't end in eighteen twenty-seven, those effects are ongoing. And we're going to go through pretty quickly some of those effects. This, I'm sure, is a map that you all have seen, this is Queens, and this is when the government comes in during the Great Depression in nineteen thirty-four and codifies the racial segregation that already exists in neighborhoods. So we're not only recognizing that it exists, but we're putting the stamp of impremature of the US government on this. And the FHA has the underwriting manual, and it said that there should be restrictions on property to include prohibition of the occupancy except by the race for which they intended. That's the government saying, not only are we okay with racial segregation, but we insist upon racial segregation if we're going to loan money for homes. And so this is us. It was kind of interesting, actually, this particular spot that we're in is among the red line, the zones on the map. So we're, as you can see, according to the federal government, nineteen thirty-four, we're in a pretty pitiful spot right here in between the red and the yellow. I don't know, I walked around today, I thought it was kind of nice, but we're going to walk through, we're going to talk through some of these specific places. So Forest Hills, this gets a green description, this is one of the highly regarded areas where they're going to lend money freely, and the reason that they're going to lend money freely under the clarifying remarks here is that it's under rigid supervision and restriction. That's referring to racially restrictive covenants. It says in the property covenants, people of color are not allowed to live here, and therefore, it gets the highest rating. Compare that to a place in the red, Jamaica, right near where we are right now, this is deemed hazardous, the federal government is not going to loan here, and the reason? There's an infiltration of Negroes from the East, an infiltration, that's what they mean. This is an interesting one, and this really hammers home the perspective of the federal government at this point. St. Albans is yellow, so that means definitely declining, and the reason says it was formerly an exclusive neighborhood, but the restrictions have expired, and now the community is in slow decline. So you can see the absolute causal relationship that the federal government sees in the way that it decides to make its lending decisions. And that's kind of an interesting story. You all know this, if you live around here, of course, but the story of Addisley Homes in Addisley Park in St. Albans here in Queens, this was a beautiful section of homes that was laid out, and when it was laid out, they were restricted. It said they're developed under rigid restrictions, and what that means is they're, black people are not allowed to live here. And so that was a selling point when it gets laid out. There's actually state Supreme Court cases, two of them, where black people move in and the neighbors sue the white neighbor who sold them the house. They say, "You signed a contract that said you wouldn't do that." And in both cases, the contract gets held up. The state Supreme Court judge says, "That's true, that's federal law until nineteen forty-eight, that if I, as a white person, sell my house to a black person, my other neighbors can sue me and block the sale." And so the judge, at this point, is a little bit hesitant about it. He says distinctions based on color and ancestry are inconsistent with our traditions and ideals, however, the court is constrained to follow precedent. That lasts until nineteen forty-eight. Eventually, once those restrictions are lifted, Addisley Park becomes what it's known for today, which is like one of the wonderful, great, middle-class black neighborhoods in the entire country. Here's a partial list of the people who lived here. That would be a pretty good block party, I think. But as we know, with progress, it doesn't mean that everything is just all looking forward and perfect. Even when Jackie Robinson, Ella Fitzgerald, Lena Horne, James Brown are living here, a cross gets burned near Jackie Robinson's house, nineteen fifty-two, that's not that long ago. Those are pictures of Jackie Robinson's family living in Addisley Park. And so the point is, and I don't have to tell you all this, slavery did not end, slavery ended in New York in eighteen twenty-seven, but that's not the end of the story. There's a lot that happened since then, that's why you all are here tonight, and we're going to step down because we know that you all have some civic action of your own to take part in, in terms of your comments. I'm going to hand it back over to Keisha. We really appreciate you all being here for this extremely important thing, we really appreciate the commission for having us. Here's Keisha, just to finish up.
And I just want to thank you so much for just your attention, your time this evening. I know you have so many important things to say. QR code right there, you can scan that, that'll give you the slide deck that we just went through, so you can hold on to that. I will tell you, we do this work all across the state, so if you're interested in us supporting your communities, your young people, we'd love to talk to you afterwards. We'll be here for a little while longer, and thank you again so much for spending your evening here to really dig into helping to make New York more equitable. So thank you so much for your time. Thank you, commissioners, thank you, folks, thank you so much for having us, we truly appreciate it.
Thank you, Keisha James and Justin Murphy, let's give our local history a round of applause. We certainly think that this was a presentation that was necessary so that we can demonstrate the impact that we still see today, and certainly you all with the lived experience can speak about that. And so we want to make room for our public hearing and officially open up the conversation today for your voices, and that is why that work is important to the commission because we are the Community Commission, and so the community is important. We have today nineteen pages of individuals that wanted to sign up today and make their voice heard, and so I want to thank you for being here today and acknowledging that this work that the commission is doing is important to you, so we thank you. I want to also thank the commissioners that are on the stage, once again, thank you, commissioners, for your leadership. Thank you to all the elected officials, and now we will begin the session. I want to start with Dr. Michelle Morse, she is the Acting Health Commissioner and Chief Medical Officer for the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. Thank you, Dr. Morse, for being here today. As Dr. Morse is taking the stage, going forward, everyone will have three minutes. The commission will be responsible for making sure that we keep time. I want to thank Thalia for going around and taking names. I also want to extend my thanks to Commissioner Jenkins for taking over for this part of the hearing as I prepare to head back to Rochester, New York and catch a nine-thirty flight, but thank you all for having me today. Let's rake room for Dr. Morse.
Good evening, everyone, can you hear me okay? All right. My name is Dr. Michelle Morse, I'm the Acting Health Commissioner and Chief Medical Officer of the New York City Health Department. I want to thank the commission for the opportunity to testify before you today. New York City is proud to have written a letter to Governor Hochul advocating for the creation of this commission, and I'm so grateful to see it in action today. Since our country's establishment as a settler colony engaged in systematic enslavement, our society has failed to interrupt and repair the longstanding pattern of harmful indifference towards the health of Black and Indigenous communities. In eighteen ninety-nine, a hundred and twenty-five years ago, W.B. Du Bois said, "The most difficult social problem in the matter of Negro health is the peculiar attitude of the nation toward the well-being of the race. There have been few other cases in the history of civilized peoples where human suffering has been viewed with such peculiar indifference. To this day, Black and Indigenous communities experience unfair, unjust, and avoidable health outcomes due to structural racism and structural violence, a term that refers to social arrangements that put individuals and communities in harm's way. Racial inequities in life expectancy have been accepted in the United States as natural. In fact, we have used ineffective, ahistoric, and one-size-fits-all interventions that have been used to address these challenges. American policies and practices have long facilitated opportunities for white households to build wealth while withholding the same opportunities from Black households. Our government has perpetuated inequities in access to education, employment, credit, and capital markets, and homeownership, all of which contribute to gaps in income and wealth by race and ethnicity. In New York State, the average white household has a net worth nearly fifteen times that of an average Black household. That discrepancy in concert with other forces of structural racism is literally taking years off of our lives. You might be wondering why a health commissioner is here talking about this, and it's for that exact reason, this has serious impact on health and longevity. Our most recent citywide data show that Black New Yorkers are dying more than five years earlier than white New Yorkers. Let me be clear that this is about racism and not race as the primary means in which these health inequities are happening, in New York and across the United States. There are two studies that I specifically want to mention that explore reparations as a means of advancing redress and justice, as well as ending the racial wealth and health gap. The first is a study that was published in twenty twenty-one that I co-authored, which found that if a federal reparations program had been in place prior to the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, the risk in Black communities with high poverty rates would have been significantly lower. In fact, transmission of COVID would have been somewhere between forty and eighty percent lower than it was. In other words, tens of thousands of lives would have been saved if we did not have the white/Black wealth gap. At the height of the pandemic in New York City, Black New Yorkers were dying at twice the rate of their white neighbors. The other study that I want to mention found that federal reparations programs would reduce the gap in longevity or the difference in rates of death between Black and white Americans by anywhere from sixty-five to a hundred percent. That means that with reparations, the gap in life expectancy that I just mentioned between Black and white New Yorkers could go away completely. Reparations has the potential to substantially narrow, if not eliminate, racial inequity in longevity and life expectancy. I appreciate the opportunity to testify today. A federal reparations program is the most direct, historically grounded, and morally just path to redressing the legacy of enslavement, and other policies like what we're talking about today should be taken immediately as bridges to a more permanent structural solution. I hope the commission will consider a range of programs here in New York City and across the state, and again, it's an honor to testify today, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Dr. Morse, we appreciate your testimony. We're going to continue on. Again, as the chair said, each person will have three minutes to give their testimony. The next person up is Mr. Owen Rogers from the National Action Network. Please go to the microphone in the middle of the floor, thank you.
Good evening. We are here as members of the National Action Network and working with the Reparations Committee in New York State as well as within the Harlem area to make sure that the parts of our community that suffer great inequality will be, at least in some ways, repaired through the legal actions by this commission. We are here, bear with me here, we are here today because we understand that particularly healthcare, education, housing, and legal issues which lead to disproportionate incarceration, that these things are all things that require the attention of New York State. It is critical that, absent what is going on with the decisions for education that are being made in Albany, local groups, churches, anti... Well, local groups, let me say, those groups who are on the ground teaching our children, it is critical that they be included in any plans for reparations. What we find is that as it goes through bureaucracy, the fight against illegal educational things that take advantage of our children, that fight gets watered down as it goes through bureaucracy. Because of that, we need to make sure that the grassroots groups, like the National Action Network and like several of the groups that are represented here today, that those groups will have a voice. We also need to make sure that as the New York State Committee on Reparations talks about finances, we cannot ignore the fact that there were these clauses in many of the sales of real estate that prohibited sale of land, real estate, to people of African descent. How we retroactively deal with that is a difficult thing to argue, that we have to, must be conceded. This cannot be ignored because this is part of the reason that we have that disproportionate wealth being passed on in other communities. So this is something, that clause that existed in many, many, many leases and mortgages cannot be put aside, it must be addressed. Additionally, we feel that New York State has the obligation to teach to our children part of the reason why their healthcare is being cut back. While in our community and municipal areas, healthcare is being removed, private clinics that work for those who can afford the huge medical bills, those things are prospering throughout New York State. So we want to make sure in New York State, as we move forward, the reparations includes health, it includes education, it includes the legal problems that tend to have a lot of us incarcerated. This is what we want to have added to the agenda, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. I'll call a few names so that you can all line up. The next person is Dr. Glenn Vickers, following David Wheaton, Denise Johnson, James Fleming, and William McDonald, in that order.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Glenn Vickers, I am a former Suffolk County Assistant District Attorney. The four-volume nineteen ninety-one...
Dr. Vickers, we can't hear you, can you speak into the mic?
Can you hear me now?
That's better.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm Dr. Glenn Vickers, I'm a former Assistant District Attorney from Suffolk County. The four-volume nineteen ninety-one New York State Minority Report concluded that New York State is running a two-tiered apartheid-like system of justice that harms Black New Yorkers, suspends Black lawyers for conduct that white lawyers are not suspended. Governor Mario Cuomo's nineteen eighty-nine report concluded that Suffolk County District Attorney's Office and Suffolk County Police Department are engaging in a patented practice of committing perjury during murder trials, also excluding Black jurors when Blacks are defendants. In nineteen ninety-six, the NAACP begged me to represent a Black woman accused of murdering a white man. Under oath in my cross-examination, six Suffolk County detectives testified she confessed to murder, and then they drove her home. I was suspended three days later after my cross-examination for defending a Black woman, and the NAACP fled. Thereafter, a judge in another courtroom said, "Don't you get it, don't you get it? We are not going to allow you to practice law out here. But, Mr. Vickers, you look like you have broad shoulders, why don't you see if you can't get a job lifting boxes at Pathmark? I hear they're hiring, why don't you go today?" In twenty twelve, Republican New York State Senator Owen Johnson launched an investigation on my complaints and concluded that my civil rights had been violated by the New York State Judiciary and that I was due damages. Senator Philip Boyle, also a Republican, and the Reverend Dr. Carl L. Washington from Newmont Zining Baptist Church in Harlem also supported me. But Democrat Governor Andrew Cuomo blocked my Republican settlement, and then by his own executive order reinstated the law license of a white felon, Attorney Michael Dow, and gave him a job with New York State. This commission represents the three branches of government who I have served by documentation. I am asking you, since I have re-served you today, to pass on the documentation so that my settlement can be included in New York State's twenty twenty-five budget, and my petition now before Governor Hochul for my immediate reinstatement by executive order be granted. For those who want, for those who want a copy of these documentations, you can contact me at BlackLawyersMatter, LDF, at gmail dot com, and I'd also say, do I have more time?
No, your time is up, doctor, thank you so much for your testimony, thank you.
Good evening, members of the commission, my name is David Wheaton, and I'm an attorney with the NAACP Legal Defense Fund, also known as LDF. Founded in nineteen forty by a third good marshal, LDF is the nation's oldest civil rights legal organization fighting for racial justice. More than sixty years after the passage of the Civil Rights Act in nineteen sixty-four, Black Americans are still impacted by anti-Black racism. From employment, housing, education, and the criminal justice system, Black New Yorkers currently face barriers to opportunity rooted in chattel slavery and discriminatory government policies. For generations, the New York State government has engaged in active and passive discrimination against Black New York City residents that continues to limit their ability to thrive economically, physically, and psychologically. Discrimination against Black communities ultimately harms all New Yorkers, weakening our multiracial democracy and limiting economic growth and security. Under the Equal Protection Clause, government programs, or race is a factor, are subject to a legal standard known as strict scrutiny, regardless of whether they are meant to help or harm people of color. In order to meet strict scrutiny, programs must be narrowly tailored to meet a compelling government interest. As the Supreme Court recently affirmed in the Student for Fair Missions case, the government has a compelling interest to consider race in order to remedy discrimination and can pass legislation to address it. In order to demonstrate that the government has a compelling interest in remedying discrimination, the record must include evidence that the government itself discriminated against particular groups or passively participated in a discrimination by other actors. These materials can include reports of recent historical discrimination, firsthand narratives of discrimination, studies documenting statistical racial disparities, and more. In order to build a thriving economy and a resilient multiracial democracy, New York State must break down barriers to opportunity that harm Black communities and ensure that taxpayer dollars don't fund discrimination. This commission has the opportunity to investigate and suggest remedies for these historic, ongoing harms. The causes of these harms include discriminatory housing policies like racially restrictive restrictive covenants, which prevented Black New York City residents from having the same housing mobility as white New Yorkers. While these covenants appeared in private contracts, they were upheld by state action. In a 1947 decision, the New York State Supreme Court held--
Mr. Wheaton, I'm sorry, I have to stop you there, and thank you for your testimony.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commission. My name is Denise Johnson, Nubia of Behind the Scenes Magazine. I have a question. Has any of the panel discussed the demand for land in New York State with farmland, housing, for Blacks who are the descendants of slaves in New York State to be given to them as well as payout for reparations?
Good evening. My name is Wayne McDonald. I am a resident of this community and a taxpayer. My problem with this whole thing is that reparations started off as a remedy for those who were descendants of slaves in this country. I'm hearing things now that, well, it sounds to me like when some of you people get through, we're going to be looking at what happened with affirmative action, where the biggest beneficiary of affirmative action was white women. Let me be very clear. I pay taxes. We have legislators whose job it is to remedy a lot of the concerns in this community. One of the things that I hope that comes out of this commission is something for those who are descendants of slaves in this country, because I don't see it happening.
Good evening, everybody. My name is James Fleming. I signed up for this time, but I respectfully want to yield my time back to the group. I'm a co-founder of a grassroots reparations--
Mr. Fleming, can you come a little closer to the mic, please?
Yeah, hi. I'm a, my name is James Fleming, and I'm a co-founder of a grassroots reparations community group called Paying Reparations Now. I respectfully yield my time. It's more important that I use this occasion to listen and to learn, but I submit that there is this place and a time for white reparationists to be able to talk to other white people about Black reparations, and it's for that purpose that I'm here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next up, we'd like to recognize Ms. Arva Rice, the president and CEO of the Urban League of New York City. Hello?
Good evening, my brothers and sisters.
Good evening.
It is wonderful to see you all. It was great to see Owen, who is a partner with us. I am at the New York Urban League, and I wanted to thank and appreciate my sister in this movement, the president of the Rochester Urban League, who is the chair of this commission. Many of the things that are important to us right now have already been said, but as my mentor Mayor David Dickens used to say, everything that's been said has been said, but everybody hasn't said it. So I'll just repeat a couple of the, of the key themes of this evening. I cannot think of a more important time for us to have a reparations committee than right now. The incoming administration is looking at DEI and as Black people wanting to erase the contributions that we have made and also wanting to say that the reasons why we are here, he can't understand because slavery was 200 years ago. But we have heard from the commission here today, and we know from our own life experiences that there's reasons why we're here today. The fact is, we never got our 40 acres in a mule. And so I want to thank and congratulate this commission. I look forward to the recommendations that will come forward as a result of their work. As we know, as people of African descent, that the, the issues that we now face, whether it's in the criminal justice system, whether it's in housing, whether it's in economic development, whether it's in healthcare, as we heard from the commissioner of health, it is because of a long-term systematic oppression of people, of, of people of African descent. And so I want to congratulate this commission today. I look forward to their recommendations and being able to provide even more of them as we work together in collaboration. Once again, Arva Rice, president of the New York Urban League. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rice. We will now have Ms. Ivy Valentine, Paris Green, Nazinda Robertson, Arnold McKinley, and Kamara Hudson.
Hello, how are you? My name is Ivy Valentine, and I'm the founding director of the Solidarity Society and a member of the New Yorkers for Reparations Coalition. I'm so thrilled to be here on the eve of my submitting my graduate capstone that looks at how enslaved women were able to withhold their reproductive capacity as a refutation of their condition. It is absolutely tragic and resilient and so powerful how these women, in the face of immense dehumanization, did powerful things in deciding when and where they would have children. With that, I think that our desires for reparations needs to take into account these very specific dynamics with which we've come to be the enriching community that we are. I am here to partner with the commission to the extent allowable so we can truly investigate these very particular dimensions of enslavement that are often overlooked. Thank you.
Reparations is a lineage matter. People enslaved as chattel in the United States built this country from scratch, as those who enslaved them stole the fruits of their labor, their wealth, and their land to fuel the livelihood of invaders and immigrated families. Their fruits established this capitalist system. Centuries later, it's the same formula. Immigrants and their descendants are not owed any form of reparations for U.S. chattel slavery and its remnants. This is not an African, Pan-African, nor an out-of-Africa theory matter. This is a lineage matter. Black Americans are ethnically American, and we are the descendants. This task force should already have reports on how companies like Aetna Insurance, New York Life Insurance, J.P. Morgan Chase, Brooks Brothers, Tiffany &amp; Company, and many more continue to benefit from slavery in this state. How about the draft riots, mass incarceration, Seneca Village, urban renewal projects, redlining and covenants in housing deeds against the descendants? You should already have a wealth of reports to share with us without the need of requesting an extension. This task force should be addressing the generational harms and impact of slavery in New York, laws, policies, and practices against the descendants, and recommend tangible solutions, starting with the stolen wealth. But instead, this signed bill promotes ethnocide against Black Americans by using our identity, ancestors, and history to loophole a framework to benefit others. This is undermining and exploitative. How can you address the harm when this signed bill is the harm itself?
Good evening. I stand here today over 400 years after the first enslaved Africans set foot on North American soil. 2025 will be 160 years since Special Bail Order Number 15, which promised to allot 40 acres of land, so the formerly enslaved was overturned by President Andrew Johnson. I'm sure we are all familiar with the valiant call for reparations by Malcolm X, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., the Black Panthers, Jesse Jackson, and Cobra, D-12, and the 1982 African People Socialist Party's forum and tribunals on reparations. More recently, in 2001, the December 12th Movement and the National Black United Front organized 400 Black people to participate in the United Nations World Conference on Racism in Durban, South Africa. The organizing and lobbying by the Durban 400 was instrumental in the passage of the Durban Declaration and Program of Action, a comprehensive framework for addressing racism, racial discrimination, xenophobia, and related intolerance. At that conference, slavery and the transatlantic slave trade were declared crimes against humanity and that reparations were due to the descendants of former slaves. So it is clear that the idea of reparations is not a novel one. Neither is the United States' perpetual refusal to acknowledge and take responsibility for its role in the slave trade and the crimes and atrocities they committed. Some of the largest benefactors of slavery are right here in New York City. J.P. Morgan Chase, formerly J.P. Morgan, Lehman Brothers, Aetna, New York Life, and Harriman Brothers, all profited from the sale, brokering, and financing of slavery. It is a fact that African people contributed to the foundation of the success of these companies, which emanated directly from the exploitation and free labor they extracted from their slaves for over a century. The fact that the descendants of former slaves and those victims of structural racism who followed are consistently denied their reparations is a tragedy in itself and speaks to the very racial and discriminatory behaviors--
Thank you, Ms. Robertson.
--Black people face in New York City today.
Thank you.
They stole us. They sold us. They owe us.
Good evening. My name is Arnold McKinley. I'm a member of Operation Power and the December 12th Movement. Now, a lot of things were admitted. If it wasn't for the great Honorable Charles Barron, there would be no reparations bill. Let's, let's be clear. And on the commission, two organizations, which have spent over 25 years in dealing with reparations on a national level and international level, and Cobra and D-12, they were, they were supposed to be part of the commission, and I don't know why that wasn't because they definitely have the expertise to deal what we need to be done to remedy over 200 years of slavery, terrorism, and any, and every other oppression that's been against, against the Black community. So my, my, now, as a layman, the first thing that needs to be done is stop the ethnic cleansing right here in New York State, because it's happening as we speak. In St. Albans, I've noticed that more and more people who are not like us are moving in. Why is that? Why is that? And I tell you, city of, city of yes is a city of no. So I advise anybody who wants to stop it, join the lawsuit, because basically, the, the long range is to get, is to get more renters to own the property, which will eventually get Black people out of, of New York State. So we need to stop city of yes, because that city of yes is a city of no for all of us. So in summary, matter of fact, it'd be more advantageous if you consult us to be part of the program, because things have to be done. It's, it's been a, it's been a year, and what has been done? So we need to see, see some results now. That's all I've got to say. Black power.
Thank you, Mr. McKinley.
Good afternoon, oh, good afternoon, members of the New York State Reparations Commission. My name is Kamara Scoops Hudson, representing the New York Civil Liberties Union and in partnership with New Yorkers for Reparations. Tonight, I'm here to highlight two interconnected legacies of slavery that continue to harm Black communities in Queens and across New York City for generations: environmental racism and educational segregation. The effects of these systems did not emerge by accident. They are direct descendants of the spatial and social control mechanisms used during slavery to restrict Black mobility and advancement. First, I will address environmental racism. New York City's redlining practices and race-based zoning policies laid the groundwork for targeting Black neighborhoods for unwanted polluted uses, today more commonly known as environmental racism, targeting Black neighborhoods for uses such as stationary sources of polluting, including power plants and waste processing facilities. A major example of these unwanted uses was through the placement of highway construction across New York City that deliberately targeted Black neighborhoods and displaced 250,000 New Yorkers from their homes. The consequences continue to this day. Of New York's 51 city council districts, the neighborhoods that line the BQE often rank lowest in a host of environmental health and mobility outcomes. These communities bear the burden of our city's most harmful infrastructure that demands immediate state action and redress. This leads me to my second point. For over two centuries, New York State has systematically denied Black New Yorkers access to a quality education through policies, legislation, and state inaction. While New York State did not have the same prohibitions on educating Black people as existed in the South during the period of enslavement, theories of white racial superiority underlie its history of educational segregation. For example, in Queens, not long after the abolition of slavery, 75 Black students across seven grade levels were forced into a single classroom with one teacher after being barred from the local public school because they were Black. When Elizabeth Cisco and her Black, other Black parents fought the segregation by boycotting the schools, they faced arrest. The Ciscos themselves were arrested six times in five years. Over 100 families joined their protests, but the New York Court of Appeals upheld discriminatory system. The fight for educational equity continued well into the 20th century. Even after Brown versus Board of Education, Queens actively resisted integration. When 400 predominantly Black students were bused to Glendale Ridgewood, they faced violence by white protesters who were harassed, and the city abandoned its plans for integration. Today, New York City Public Schools is the most segregated school district in the country. While Black students make up 15% of the New York City Public School population, they receive 40% of all suspensions across the district, perpetuating a system that supports violence and racially biased punishment towards Black students. This continued pattern of discrimination demands immediate reform and accountability. The environmental and educational racism in Queens today and across New York State and across New York City are created, um, were created by laws to maintain Black residents as inferior and deny them equal access to human rights. From highways destroying Black neighborhoods to schools that punish Black students at double the rate of others, our state replaced slavery with new systems designed to maintain racial inequality. Meaningful reparations must address not just slavery itself, but the ongoing harms that continue to deny Black New Yorkers full citizenship. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Next, we'll have Mr. Luis Rodriguez, R.C., Charles Claudio Supkin, and Laura Hardy.
Reparations Commission, elected officials, everybody in the building, good evening.
Good evening.
I have two pathways for solution that lead us on the way to reparations, one of which has, the variables exist now, meaning there's no need to write something new or do something new, there's a need to expose something that already exists. Rikers Island and Natcha are two glaring symbols of racial injustice that demand transformative action. Rikers, named after Richard Riker, a man infamous for sending free Black people and escaped slaves to slaveholding states, stands as a reminder of slavery's legacy in today's mass incarceration system. Its very existence perpetuates the cycles of poverty, broken families, and violence that plague Black communities. We can reimagine that land. There is a lot of talk of closing Rikers, and Rikers Island-- There is a lot of talk of closing Rikers, and Rikers Island can basically be a reparative, reparative, economic hub of black-owned businesses, affordable housing and job training, a family reunification campus, because we all know, main job of Cointel Pro was to disable the black family, and basically, it can be a place for healing and restoring connections. Now, the second one regards something that already exists. So I want all of you to Google HUD Section 32. We all know HUD Section 8, HUD Section 9, there is a HUD section that already exists. It is called HUD Section 32. NYCHA, New York City Housing Authority, has a chance to rewrite its legacy by rejecting the privatization and displacement inherent in RAD Pact. While RAD promises repairs, it sacrifices long-term tenants' stability, leaving families vulnerable to rising rents and loss of control. Instead, NYCHA can enact a pathway through resident management and HUD's Section 32 program, which allows public housing authorities to sell its units to public housing residents, which we were redlined into anyway. By empowering tenants to oversee their developments and transitioning public housing units to affordable, resident-owned homes, similar to Rochdale Village in Queens, similar to Esplanade in Harlem, or Co-op City in the Bronx, uh, one second. We empower each other to oversee our developments and transition these units into affordable, resident-owned homes, where we create equity, stability, and wealth for black families. This is not just about housing, it's about repairing the harm of systemic oppression and giving black communities the tools to build generational wealth and autonomy.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez.
Hello to the commission, to everybody here in attendance. My name is Charles Claudio Simpkins. I'm an attorney. I'm from Ridgewood, New York originally, but I currently reside in Bed-Stuy. I wanted to start with a little bit, yup, Bed-Stuy, a little bit of my family history. My second great-grandfather was born in Mississippi in 1890. At some point between 1920 and 1930, he migrated to New York State. He worked as a red cap, and he is recorded on the 1950 census as living on the same block in Brooklyn in Bed-Stuy that I now raise his great-great-great-grandson.
Who won?
Two generations under him. My grandmother, Jean Whitfield, was born in New York State, and in 1945, as a high school student, she sought to attend Forest Hills High School. The only problem was Forest Hills High School, which had recently opened in 1941, and had costed upwards of $21 million in terms of the money it was spent then relative to 2021. It's an architectural marvel at the time, quickly develops a reputation for excellence, but Forest Hills High School doesn't allow black people to attend. So, my grandmother, Jean Whitfield, her mother, and a certain Adam Clayton Powell sued. They successfully brought suit, and my grandma Jean integrated Forest Hills High School in I know there's a question about the community of eligibility. Myself, the Ados Advocacy Foundation New York chapter, which I run with Nick Johnson, who's in attendance, and many others in this room support lineage specificity. I understand that there is some concern that the way that the legislation is written requires this commission to consider remedies and recommendations that apply to all black New Yorkers. I'm not entirely sure if that is correct, but even if it is, I would say that we have to weigh the quantum of the harm that has been done to each group, whether it's black immigrants and their descendants, or American descendants of slavery and their descendants. And I think what you'll see is that we have had vastly different experiences in New York State. We have been interacted with by systems of oppression in different ways. To point, we saw something up there about restrictive covenants and deeds in Forest Hills, right? Those restrictions that were supposed to be race-based were not always applied consistently across race. So West Indians, for example, from the early 20th century onward, were treated like white ethnics. They were able to purchase homes at a premium from white people that white people would never sell to Ados people. Then those West Indians were able to get into the brokerage business, where they were able to buy housing stock in bulk and then sell it to other West Indian friends and colleagues and community members. Now, that's at a time where Ados folks were locked out. That's at a time where my ancestors were locked out. So I would say that, to the extent that you guys are going to ask for more time, I would say that you should also redefine the community of eligibility in any amendments to the legislation. Thank you.
Good evening, commission. Good evening, electeds, and good evening, everyone else here. I am Laura Hardy, president of Erase Racism, the regional civil rights organization based on Long Island that exposes and addresses the devastating impact of historical and ongoing structural racism, particularly in public school education and housing. We do so through research, policy advocacy, legal action, and educating and mobilizing the public and our young people. I'm also here as a member of the New Yorkers for Reparations Coalition. I greet you today from Long Island, where the first enslaved Africans arrived with Dutch settlers in 1626, and the first enslaved Africans in Suffolk County were brought by Nathaniel Sylvester to Sylvester Manor from Barbados in 1654. It is said that Long Island was home to the largest population of enslaved people in the northern colonies, and in fact, New Yorkers enslaved more Africans than all of the New England colonies combined. Names like Paris Scancer, a former enslaved man who became a black whaler and a prominent businessman and philanthropist in Southampton, are unknown and forgotten in a place now known for celebrity sightings and multimillion-dollar homes. I'm greeting you today as a representative of Long Island, where centuries after the end of slavery, 70 years after Brown reboarded Ed, and 60 years after the passage of the Civil Rights Act, the impact of structural racism means that of 291 communities on Long Island, most of its black residents live in 11 communities. I come to you today from a region with such racial segregation that a student could live in the same city or village and have completely different access to high-quality education based on their race and ethnicity. Specifically, if you are a black student who resides in one of our 14 intensely segregated school districts, your ability of graduating with at least one AP course, going to a four-year college, or even graduating at all is significantly reduced. Your access to guidance counselors and social workers is significantly less than predominantly white districts. And in fact, the current state education foundation formula is configured in such a way that it fails to provide educational services to our black students in our high needs districts that they deserve, thereby failing to fully fund them for the quality public school education that the New York State Constitution guarantees. I'm greeting you tonight from Long Island, the 10th most segregated region in the country, the place where the history of segregation is due to racially restrictive covenants, redlining, and urban renewal, such that places like Glencoe, Rich Hampton, and Sag Harbor, which were once locations for early free black communities, are now sites of multimillion-dollar homes, communities like Hampstead Village.
Ms. Hardy, I'm so sorry, I have to cut you off there.
We need reparations now, education, higher ed grant aid, and governmental, a review of governmental functionings and how they.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy. We, it was three minutes. Okay. So we just want to remind everybody, especially those of you who didn't get to share your entire testimony, but for all of you, we would welcome you submitting your testimonies, your written testimonies tonight by email at our website, www.ny.gov backslash or forward slash reparations, and you'll be able to submit your testimonies. Thank you. The next people up are Erin Von Black, Trevor Smith, Nicole Carti, Gerald Briscoe, Kenneth Worrell.
Peace. Von Black here. Uh, I'm gonna get right to it. Y'all seen what happened in California? They played with those people for two years. They played in the face of black people for two years, and then in the 11th hour, they allowed Gavin Newsom to hide behind those black folks to do that little punk stuff that he did. And they allowed that. So I'm here to say to y'all, we not gonna allow that. 10 million of us was able to flip that election and cause what happened, right? Out of the 43 to 45 million of us, it was just 10 million that decided to stay home. I was one of them. And y'all seen what happened. Now, you got some folks in here that won't cop to that, they won't agree with it, they'll say, oh, it was the Latinos, it was this one, it was that one, it was black men hated black women, they didn't want to see the black woman, and it was nothing like that. We tired of y'all playing with us. So, I'm gonna say to y'all, if you think that you gonna play with us, you going, how they say it, F around and find out, keep playing with us.
My name is Trevor Smith. I'm the co-founder of the Bliss Collective. Bliss stands for Black Liberation Indigenous Sovereignty. I'm also a member of New Yorkers for Reparations. I want to start by saying that reparations are absolutely due to those who are the descendants of enslaved people, and also acknowledge that the genocide done on this land to black people was made possible by the forced removal and genocide of indigenous people, and that this fight sits within the broader push for decolonization. As I speak to you today, we are just a few miles from Wall Street, an epicenter of global finance and a monument to a darker history. Wall Street, where enslaved Africans were bought, sold, and rented at the slave market located at Pearl in Wall Street. Wall Street, where names like George Washington, who enslaved more than 300 black people, are memorialized as symbols of power and freedom while the violence of their legacies goes unspoken. Wall Street, where the labor of enslaved black men, women, and children not only built physical infrastructure, but also laid the financial foundation for the United States' economy. By the mid-18th century, more than 40% of New York City households enslaved at least one black person, and New York banks and insurance companies directly profited from underwriting slave ships and plantations. Reparations must include financial compensation for the centuries of violence and extraction that has been caused on black American communities, but I'd be remiss if I did not say the call for reparations is not simply about economic repair, it is also about cultural repair. Anti-black narratives shaped and perpetuated over generations have been instrumental in upholding systems of racial inequality. News outlets like the New York Herald and New York Times ran stories describing enslaved people as content and grateful for their conditions, and modern media still echoes these harmful narratives through stereotypes and underrepresentation. But this harm is not confined to the media alone, it is inscribed in our physical environments. Across the state and city, we see prominent public parks, schools, and streets bearing the names of enslavers, figures like Anthony Bleeker, the Delancey family, the Barclay family, and Chambers family. What and who we choose to memorialize says a lot about our values and who we value, and it is clear that this society does not value black people. Imagine the psychological toll that this takes on black children who are asked to learn, play, and grow in spaces named after those who viewed their ancestors as property. Studies show that exposure to these harmful symbols and narratives exacerbates racial trauma and contributes to chronic stress in black communities. We cannot talk about reparations without addressing the psychological wounds. Reparations must absolutely include financial restitution and must include emotional and psychological repair. Repair requires not only removing the names and statues that glorify harm, but building a new culture that celebrates and loves blackness.
My name is Nicole Carti. I'm the executive director of Get Free, which is a youth movement to repair past harms, remove ongoing barriers to equality, and realize a future where freedom is for all. We're also a member of New Yorkers for Reparations, the Coalition. I currently live in Clinton Hill, Brooklyn, but I was born and raised, yes, ICU, thank you, Dr. Cody, but I was born and raised in Atlanta, Georgia, where my grandfather fought for civil rights from his pulpit down the street from Martin Luther King. It's an honor of a lifetime to be here today and to give public testimony for the New York State Reparations Commission. This is a moment that I know was made possible by the work of reparationists fighting for justice since before abolition. With this commission, New York has a historic opportunity to finish the work of the civil rights movement, and work to create a New Yorker freedom and equality are truly for all. Let's be clear, reparations are about the present and the future, they're not just about the past. The harms of dehumanization of slavery are with us to this day, woven into our society and our laws. We see it in poverty in our community, in the early deaths of our family members. This commission has an opportunity to break chains, is a chance to stop this violence and save the next generation of New Yorkers from inheriting this legacy and creating a New Yorker freedom is real. Much has been said tonight on the need for comprehensive reparations for slavery and its aftermaths, and I'm trying to figure out what I could offer additionally to that, but one thing that I know is true is there are people who rely on inequality to hold on to power, and there are people who are trying to make it illegal to teach our history, working to undermine our efforts to address discrimination, and they will smear this effort. And to them, and you should say, the real history of America is that when black people have gotten free, we have all gotten free. When we have done right by enslaved African Americans, enslaved people, the benefits have reached everyone. The 14th Amendment is the basis for real equality in this country, the civil rights movement, the basis for real accessibility in this country. Comprehensive reparations for slavery is finishing the unfinished work of the civil rights movement, and every New Yorker who believes in fairness, equality, and freedom should support this commission. Let me repeat that. Every New Yorker who believes in fairness, equality, and freedom should support this commission. This is vital. We're at a time when political leaders are rewarding black dehumanization, whitewashing our history. Now's the time for New York to lead. Thank you so much.
You have 30 seconds, I'm sorry.
I have 30 seconds.
Yes, sorry.
My goodness. Now's the time for New York to lead. Now's the time to correct the record, repair the harm, and make reparations for all New Yorkers real, to make a society that is free and equal for all. There I go.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy.
Hi, my name is JJ Briscoe. I'm an organizer with Get Free as well, and our mission is to make reparations a political priority for Gen Z and millennials, so shout out to them. Not too many in this room, but we matter because, yeah, everything that this commission does is going to be for our futures and the futures of our descendants. So also, I just wanted to mention that I really wanted to hear solutions, you know, to the political and economic system that we are currently living under that derives from reparations. At Get Free, we have a repair mandate that calls, and I really hope that the commission really takes note of this, this repair mandate that calls for the cessation of policies that currently perpetuate racism, the creation of policies to remedy, also the returning of wealth, land, and resources that the 1% and rich corporations owe due to centuries of exploitation, genocide, and enslavement. And then, of course, we need to make sure that we have, we're recognizing and reckoning with the whole truth of our history and how it shaped our present. I also just, with this time I had, wanted to give some oxygen to some other movements that I know are a part of this movement and are a part of repairing white supremacy at the root. One of those would be, at the state level, public banking, allowing municipal government to create public banks so that our taxpayer dollars aren't in Wall Street banks that we know invest in private prisons that are keeping our brothers enslaved, since that's the only way it's legal. But instead, putting our tax dollars into public banks, municipal government, it stays in our hands, and we can invest them in initiatives that would bring wealth to our own communities. Another thing would be at the city level, I saw Speaker Adams was here earlier, there's the Community Land Act that would also help bring land back into the hands of brown and black communities. land back into the hands of brown and black communities instead of real estate developers. And I saw it wasn't brought to the floor this past session, but I know that most of the city council is on board and there's no reason that it should have any further delay. And then the last thing would be the Repair Act. This is something that has been going throughout New York City. It would be state legislation. And that would bring funds from NYU and Columbia as they evade over a hundred million dollars in property taxes. It would funnel those property taxes straight into the community school system, which we know, who are the community students? You know, majority. And those are some of the things I wanted to mention. Let's talk about solutions.
Thank you.
Please allow everyone to speak. If we can quiet down just a little bit to respect the others. Thank you. Floor is yours.
Hello, committee. My name is Kevin Arthur World. And I've made a legal draft to submit to the board in which I can't do it in three minutes. So I'mma do it online. But I just wanted to make a statement. I am a proud member of the National Action Network, where our founder is the Reverend Dr. Al Sharpton. I am also a member of the Men's Auxiliary Committee. I am here with my brothers today, which are right over there, and my brother right in front of me. And today, they gave me the opportunity to voice my opinion on what I thought some of the things that should be done with the reparations that I know that one day you will get. I think that the reparations should be distributed to churches, to community organizations, to people who have a longstanding commitment in the community, who have been in this community for years, who have worked for our rights, who have done so many things to, to put us in the forefront of the fight for our civil rights and the things that even the churches that you named, like the AME Church. I also think, just like Martin Luther King thought on August the twenty-eighth, nineteen sixty-three, when he said that it had been obvious that America has defaulted on its promissory note and as far as much as her citizens of color are concerned. And instead of honoring this sacred obligation, America has given its colored people a bad check. A check that has come back marked insufficient funds. But we refuse to believe that justice is bankrupt. And today, I just wanted to say on behalf of every black boy that has grown up in America and has felt like he don't have the things that the other people have or the other races have, that one day he will be able to say that reparations was given
Thirty seconds.
for the things that were done to our ancestors. And that one day that he will be able to tell his children that that check that Martin Luther King talked about was actually cashed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Varell. Next, we have Verda Olanyinka, Charles Richard Zarelli, Linda Roots, S.D. Mae Kendall and King Tremaine.
As those folks prepare to testify, just a reminder about process. This body will be producing a report which contains recommendations to the state legislature. Those members of the state senate and assembly will then review and vote upon said recommendations. So the passion that we're feeling in this room will also need to be directed at the elected representatives who will be charged with voting on whether or not to pass these recommendations into law. So I really want to just remind us all, this is part of the work. The rest of the work is engaging with your electeds because once we produce a report, we have no power to make it come true. That is legislation that must be passed. Just a reminder about process.
Thank you. Thank you, committee. Thank you for having us here in New York City. My comments have to do with the process of how we engage in making those decisions and identifying the key areas so that we can, there can be an equitable, logical way for the reparations to be distributed. I am a city research scientist formerly, and I am a cultural consultant. I wrote a book, Resist Turbulent Times: Ways to Save Ourselves. There are many reasons justifying the reparations here and also strategies. I want to mention the NCRC, the National Community Reinvestment Commission, National Community Reinvestment, because they have already committed eighty-eight billion dollars, okay, for community reinvestment. And some of those resources can be incorporated into the plans that are being established right here. They already have criteria for what is allowable for even micro enterprises and other strategies to bring about equitable results. Now, I am from St. Albans, Queens, at a slave park. My parents purchased property in nineteen fifty-five. We're here. We have seen the entire community transition. And other speakers have spoken about this. There are more, I'm a researcher. It's in here, okay? Ethnic manipulation is chapter five, okay? There are more than seventeen thousand forebodings in Jamaica, Queens, just this little nineteen-square-mile area, okay? And eleven zip codes. Seventeen thousand, that was as of March twenty-twenty-three.
Thirty seconds.
Well, there's a way that we can reestablish many Tulsa, Tulsa, Oklahomas across the USA in real time with reparations. It's not only cash money out, but how do we develop these institutions and save ourselves?
Thank you.
And I thank you for this moment. Anyone who wants, I have cards. I have books. If you want them, this will help in the decision-making process.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I appreciate it. I feel welcome. Thank you. Divine providence. And so I'd like to say a fast poem. Any meanie mighty mo. Look around us at all the people who cast out, as well as yourselves. Before us, we gathered together to advance our people to make it better. And there's something that was secret that no one ever divulged. My name is Charles Richard Zarelli, and I wrote a book. I have found a secret that would go beyond reparations and respect. And to every one of you who said what you said, there's a theology that has been hidden. And the only key thing is top people would have to be brought in. Why? They got beaucoup bucks. They're the ones who are gonna make this happen. Fight them? It's not gonna happen. Join with them? And I found two things they missed that are gonna wanna be part of this. And I gave up my birthday party to be here tonight. And I appreciate all of what we represent. Within the theology, divine providence is something that every one of us are entitled to. No one has ever told you this. And I love and I respect that I've served people all my life. I wipe my feet walking in your house and people are like, stop wiping your feet already. Come in. And I appreciate, as a diagnostic professional person with forty-five years' worth of experience and a high triumph rating, that I know not just that all people would want this, divine providence is something that would make public more, I don't wanna say the word compliant, but respectfully appreciate the guide that we have not had. My name is Charles Richard Zarelli. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Good evening, commissioners and fellow neighbors of Queens and of New York State. My name is Linda Roots. I'm a retired attorney. I'm a second-generation New Yorker. And I have been involved with reparations for the last twenty-five to thirty years. Last time I was in this building was when Herman Ferguson and his wife, Ayalua, were here and they had an Incobra chapter. And Sundays, they would have meetings. And we got together, we were New York chapter. We got together and tried to support reparations program. Unfortunately, both my brother and sister died after leaving New York, but they were really good, active fighters in the community. I've been a member of Incobra since 2002. I've been involved with December twelfth Movement for Human Rights before they became the December twelfth Movement, when they were a bunch of individuals. I was the advisor to the Corona East Elm Hurst Youth Council years ago. And in the early two thousands, we put in the first reparations resolution that was accepted by National Incobra, and that was to support H.R. Forty. H.R. Forty was a federal bill. It was introduced by John Conyers in nineteen eighty-nine. So we've had thirty-five years of that bill floating around. And all these commissions that are being started are a result of that bill. The Incobra Legislative Committee came together and they drew up this bill looking for a national commission to study reparations. So we were looking for the whole country to be studied, not bits and pieces, not Harlem versus Bed-Stuy or Queens versus Brooklyn, but the nation to be studied because it is under the federal law of the United States that slavery really thrived. And I am making the suggestion, lots of people have information. I think getting information about what has been deprived, what has been done to us, what we are doing, I think that's the easiest thing to do is get the money. Since the book, the debt came out, there have been many, many studies on what you owe. But how we're gonna get there, reparations is not just a check. And I think
Thank, thank you.
Just let me say one more thing. I think that we should approach this as you study, looking for global counter remedies. I don't mean the
Ms. Roots, thank you so much. We have a lot of people who signed up to speak. Please submit your testimony. Thank you.
I wonder, can I be allowed to say something?
Oh, hold on.
My name is Donald Sudan Law. And many of us are
Sorry, sir. Did you sign up?
Yes.
She
What is your name?
My name is Donald Law. Everything I do is legal.
No, the next person is S.D.
Yes, 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 yes. My birth certificate says my name is Donald Law, but that's not my name. I will go by the name Sudan, which might not be recognized tonight. So I would just like to say something.
What name did you use to sign up, sir? Because we have a list of people in a particular order. If you could keep, you can have three minutes when it's your turn. Unfortunately, we have a list of people and there's a specific order. So out of respect for the community in the room, we would just ask that people would wait until their name is called. Respectfully, respectfully.
So the next person up is Miss or Mr. Mae Kendall? Are you here, S.D. Mae Kendall? King Tremaine?
Good evening. I'm King Tremaine, representing the Black American Tribe, also known as T-Bad Tax Force. I want to thank the commission for letting us know that whatever constraints that are fettering them from moving its expeditions as they would like, we understand that this process takes time. It took California four years to get this job done properly. The grassroots can assist. The grassroots can help galvanize constituents who are voters to lean on the legislature to give you all the time that you need to get this done appropriately. But that is what the grassroots is, the voice of the people, the people themselves, the ability, who you represent. As such, legislation can't be your issue, that the legislation that embodies you or empowers you now doesn't allow you to involve the grassroots. As much as you are asking for more time, you can ask the legislators to involve the grassroots process so that you do not stifle the voice of the people and include them in voluntarily. But of this commission, the only people we heard even suggest that was Chair Hawkins and Vice Chair Jenkins. The rest of the commission is seen to have a problem with that. And that begs the question as to why? If all of us are to go back to the commission meeting on seven thirty twenty-four, when they were sworn in, we would see that the commissioners supported what their agendas were, what their plan was for this process. They spent a lot of time saying that they had to worry about what the grassroots agendas were, but we know what their agendas are and they spent all night tonight telling us how they're gonna protect it. That agenda is an agenda that does not include a lineage-based package of reparations for the people. That's what that agenda is. The grassroots have always been nothing more than the voice of the people, their agenda being the repair of the communities of black American descendants. The grassroots, right now, although we applaud the wealth of the southeast Jamaica, the grassroots represents the people who exist in a non-closing wealth gap that has existed for black Americans since nineteen sixty-eight. The grassroots are the same people who are representing the people whose grocery bills look like their old rent payments and their rent payments, the new ones, look like homelessness. Speaking of California, since Dr. Davis brought them up, the grassroots were closely with them throughout that process. They did sound work, impeccable work, above reproach.
Thirty seconds.
So the CBF, the California Black Legislative Caucus, had to sabotage them and not even bring the bill to the floor. The grassroots is not your problem. What we want is true transparency. We want true accountability from this commission. If you're going to stifle our voice, then you need to tell us why. So far, you haven't. The only thing you have shown us is that you are not representing us. You're representing whatever agendas you represented on seven thirty twenty-four. Thank you.
Not working? Just as that testimony was entered into the record, it needs to be noted that that sentiment is not a reflection of what is felt on this commission. The commission actually is interested in its hearing from every individual and not just a particular set of people. That does not diminish the words or the thoughts of any one particular group or community, but rather it gives voice to all of an opinion and a thought. Thank you very much, sir.
I would also like to add that every single member of every single grassroots organization has the capacity to give us what you've worked on, your writings, your research, your recommendations. You can submit them beyond this three-minute timeframe. If you had a volume of five thousand pages, you can submit every single page. So it is important that people So it is important that people know there are a variety of ways to get us information that you want us to have and to take under advisement. And I truly hope, because what often happens is we'll have people speak on the microphone about not having their voices heard and they submit nothing beyond those three minutes of testimony. Please give us your information. Please give us your reports, your recommendations so that they can be properly included as we deliberate.
I don't want to butcher your name. So I'm going to call out the organization that you signed up as an affiliate of, the Greater Tri Associate Freedmen. Okay. And after her is Amber Clarksdale, Eugene Carlton, Kathy D., and Kenneth Snyder. In that order. We're at the eight o'clock hour. We have an hour and a half to go and we have a lot of people to hear from. So if we can move a little swiftly.
Greetings. I know I'm tired. I'm sorry. Greetings, everyone. My name is Loretta Humphrey. My na- my name is Loretta Humphrey. I'm from the Greater Triangle Civic Association. I'm sorry I missed all the conversation regarding reparations, but I'm understanding that you're only doing New York State reparations.
Yes.
Now, is this descendant of slaves New York State reparation? Or is it civil rights or human rights reparations?
As you look at the legislation, it outlines each of the categories that are considered. Those categories include those who were enslaved in the state of New York and their descendants. And it also includes looking at the harm that was inflicted after enslavement, which may have impacted groups beyond those who descended from enslavement here in New York. And that legislation is available on the website. We can, I'm sure, provide links so you can access that as well.
Okay. One thing I wanted to add that I thought that was very important-
We're having a difficult time hearing you.
You know what? I'm sounding loud to myself, was the fact that the fathers were taken out of the homes of, in New York State for them to receive welfare. And I thought that was an injustice to the, the children as well as to the wives.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to the New York State Commission on Reparations. Thank you for letting me speak. As a direct descendant of freedmen, great-great-grandfather Hill Cherry and my great-great-grandcousin Hill Cherry Jr., who both served in the Fourteenth Regiment of the United States Colored Heavy Artillery, I stand before you as someone whose family history is deeply connected to the legis- to the legacy of the Freedmen's Bureau Act of 1866. This act established the status, the status of freedmen, granting freedom and support to formerly enslaved people. I conducted extensive research at the National Archives Record Administration in Washington, DC, where I pulled pension files of my great-great-grandfather Hill Cherry and great-great-grandcousin Hill Cherry Jr. These files included depositions that shed light on their experiences and contributions. Additionally, I have census records from 1870 that provide further context to their lives post emancipation. These documents are essential to verify my lineage and establish the need for lineage-based reparations. As a present-day descendant of, as a present-day descendant, this lineage is fundamental to the recognition of reparations, reflecting the status of freedmen descendants. My heritage, combined with my service as a disabled US veteran and historian and historian of VFW post 1896, highlights the ongoing impact of these historical legacies. It is not about race, but the, but the recognized status of freedmen descendants deserving of reparations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening to the panel. Can you hear me? Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. Good evening to the panel. My name is Eugene Carlton and I'd like to say thank you to the, to the Addos community and for the freedmen and for all the Black Americans that's here. I'm just going to keep it straight to the point. Reparations is specifically for Black Americans. There is no black and brown whatsoever. It's not at all. And that's not the sh- no, they got their own thing going on. This is for our people. My grandfather, God bless his soul, he told me to speak up for him. He told me about what he went through in Franklin, Virginia, in Suffolk County, Nazareth County. I'm speaking for my great-great-grandfather on my father's side from Keenworthville, North Carolina, William Joseph Carlton. No, he's a farmer. He been working. Our people deserve it. It's, it's, it's the man if I was. We helped build this nation from the ground up. Now, speaking just on New York City, the brother already said it. We was the first commodity on Wall Street, Black Americans. I live, I'm, I'm from Brooklyn. I'm not even from Queens. I'm from Brooklyn. I'm sorry, y'all. And I live right so, couple of blocks away from Weeksville. One of the first Black American communities, free communities that went through it. It's right on Buffalo Avenue. So I'm going to keep it straight, you know. The people that's on the panel just think like, like the brother said earlier, I ain't going to say no F words, but we don't, not, we not trying to go through what California went through. Don't play with us. This is New York City. Y'all have, y'all have a good night. Oh, yeah. One more thing. To the, to the doctor, Ron Daniels. A good friend of mine, my father told me about you, brother. We know about you. So we ain't going for it here, bro. Y'all have a good night.
I strongly urge us all to be civil with one another and not engage in any threatening language. This is not what we are here for. And keep in mind at all points that the only way that anything that is put forward withstands scrutiny is if it is done in accordance with the legislation. So if you have issue with how this commission conducts itself, you'll have to take that up with the legislators. We are obligated by law to follow the commission's legislation. If you have any issue with that, you take that up with the New York State Legislature.
It is also important to note that we are not the only ones witnessing the testimony and that if there were attorneys who intended to undermine this process, the nature of testimony is also something they will take into account. It is extraordinarily important that we not harm ourselves by undermining the process before it can even get started. What may feel good in the moment can also lead to us shooting ourselves metaphorically in the foot. Let us be careful about how we engage so that we do not give those who would seek to undermine this process all the evidence that they would need as to a lack of credibility claim. No, ma'am, but this is not for anyone just in this room. This is to inform us so that we are aware as to how these processes work. Unfortunately, we are governed by legislation. And if we don't understand how the processes work, then we cannot be as effective as we want to be in pressing forward. This is not about speaking down to anyone. This is not about anyone being a child. This is about understanding how the process works.
Okay, we're going to move on. Are you Mr. Snyder?
Yes, I am.
All right. Thank you.
Hello. Reparations 101 here. I just want to say first of all that the commissioners have a very hard job and I want to show them respect and gratitude for trying to do a hard thing. I'm going to take my five seconds and say thank you to the commission because we know you got a hard job. People are mistrustful because when the state of California puts out a fourteen-hundred-page report nobody can read, written by fourteen individuals with fourteen mortgages and fourteen kids in college and fourteen sets of kids and different agendas, the people oftentimes lose. In that, the good news is here. Reparations 101. I'm very excited that all of the different community organizations are here tonight. I've got something for each and every one of you. And that's intellectual clarity and moral conviction. You see, everyone in here already has intimate awareness of the slave industrial complex. The slave industrial complex is that thing that exists in your wallets and in your university plaques. It's got names like BFA and Wells Fargo and Citibank and Aetna. It's the overarching superstructure that contains us. Now, I know in this room, we're all intellectual scholars and we know about all of such things. But beyond these walls, and let me tell you, I see the people all the time. The people ain't thinking about this. All right? Now, what we need to do is galvanize intellectual clarity and moral conviction. You hear the tone in my voice. It's because I have intellectual clarity and moral conviction. I know what the slave industrial complex is and I know that it surrounds us every single day. I know that Wells Fargo owes me money. I know that Aetna owes me money. I know that Citibank has been in business every day since 1814 and they haven't paid a single penny. I know that there's over a half a million miles of railroad track that people ride on every single day that were built by slaves and Union Pacific didn't even say, "Thank you." I'm here tonight because New York City-
Thirty seconds.
I'm here tonight because New York City is ground zero of the slave industrial complex. And your job, commissioners, is sacred. And therefore, it is my job to arm you with this ninety-seven-page handbook. And every organization here, I want to connect with you because I could help all of you because it's not the people in here who need education. It's the people out there. And when you give them a ninety-seven-page handbook, we can read it today and talk about it tomorrow. I'm going to dismount now. Think about where gay marriage was twenty years ago.
Thank you.
And there it is now. Think about where we is now. It was twenty years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder.
Thank you so much.
And I'm so happy to be here with all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder.
Thank you.
Before we go on, I just wanted to thank Commissioners Jones, Austin, and Daniel Fa- Daniel Favors for their comments to us all and to the, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me call again for Ms. Dean if she's here, Kathy Dean. Michelle, oh, Dr. Morse has already spoken. Ms. Barbara Mack. Darrell Edwards from the US Freedmen Project. And Lynette Townsley. Townsley, I'm sorry, Lynette. Are you Ms. Dean?
My name is Barbara Mack. That's Kathy Dean.
Oh, you spoke. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dean. Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Go ahead.
My name is Barbara Mack and I'm a country anxious African-American woman and I vote on a regular basis. I'm very, very thankful that all of you commissioners are involved in the reparations process. I've been hearing about reparations for my whole life, but it's not until now that Senator Sanders and Assemblywoman Salages got that bill together for Kathy, well, for Governor Kathy Hochul to sign, that now that ball is rolling. And I feel so grateful that I'm alive now and I could actually see this happening. I know that it's a lot of sacrifices that are involved. A lot of you commissioners have other jobs, other things to do. You got your own family, but you still find the time to work on this and I feel so grateful. What I'm concerned about is now that we have a president-elect that's going to be our president and soon, will he have the ability to shut down the reparations process? That's one of my questions. And the other question I have is, as an African-American woman who is in sync with you, I'm an ally of everybody who's involved in the reparations process. What could I do with my time to make sure that this ball continues to roll so that we can get reparations? What can I do?
Thank you.
If you're going to tell me later, that's fine. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just before the next speaker, I think Commissioner Daniel Favors answered that a little earlier. Once we get the report out to the legislators, to the governor, we really need your support to keep pushing this ball forward. So that's how you can continue to stay engaged and we appreciate you desiring to do so. Turn it over to you.
Hello?
Hello.
Hello. Thank you. How you doing, commission? Hello, my name is Darrell Edwards. I represent the United States Freedmen Project. I'm going to make this real quick because I know you got a lot of people, you got more people ahead of me. Real quick. I'm not black. I'm not black. I'm not black. That's a term and a phrase that we Black Americans often hear. Some of us have heard it all of our lives. So including anyone that's had justice claimed is denying justice to the Black American community. At first, we need a delineation bill with harsh punishment for anybody checking our box and trying to assume our identity, still resources like college, college scholarships. Secondly, we need money now. Now, we need money. Direct cash payment. Give us the ten Gs a day for force of testament. That's like three million dollars, three million plus dollars per descendant this year. We'll talk about the rest later. And also, immigration. Immigration shouldn't affect us, but immigration is a two-hundred-year problem and it's, we should have that number greatly reduced until Black unemployment is under 10% and we own about six to 10 industries. And also, we need a, um, black, uh, we need a black protection, we need a, oh, yeah, black hate crime bill, like the Jews and the Chinese. I was suggesting to pay for reparations also, one percent, one cent off for every transaction that Wall Street makes to pay for reparations. Also, we could tax remittances that all immigrants send out to this country at fifty percent at least. And the way to all those barrels, that's when they send barrels and stuff out of the country also. And also, can we get to Johnny Cochran's repair plan, how he went to sue all those companies to pay reparations? Also, we could do that. See, y'all talking about all the companies. And another last thing, why is that the LGBTQ history is the first piece of paper that you gave me? As a member of the community, I found it offensive. It's what it be on the first page. And all the shit about, excuse me, all the stuff about the brown community, I don't want to keep hearing that. The brown, Indian, Indian Asians are racist. So are the brown Hispanics. And I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you. Good night. My name is Christian Crick on Twitter.
Lynette Townsley, Crystal Brown, Marcy Bolden, Maureen Miller, and Catherine Green Johnson. Lynette Townsley. Crystal Brown. Crystal Brown. She left. Okay, thank you. Marcy Bolden. Marcy Bolden. Maureen Miller. Maureen Miller. Okay. Want to come to the mic?
Hi. Scott, when?
When you introduce yourself, you're on the mic. Go right ahead.
Time Scott to announce?
Is that mic live?
The lineage. Greetings all. It may can be suggested that the true descendants of slavery and/or the indigenous people's ancestry right here, perhaps within our neighborhoods or perhaps our towns, might be the best who may can also help to further promote an inkling of reconciliation and healing. who may can also help to further promote an inkling of reconciliation and healing versus highly likely the perhaps millions of others who came possibly to our neighborhoods or possibly our towns and highly likely given prioritized and perhaps so, yes, also lumped into one with the perhaps the true descendants of slavery or possibly the indigenous peoples' ancestry, particularly from the year 1865 to 1965, because many of the others were simply not here, not in our neighborhoods and not in our towns. Though same others highly likely were not the descendants of slavery or highly likely not the indigenous peoples who tore up the soil free of charge. For example, just to demonstrate as follows, this extremely appears to be important because to all, because it's what's more than likely makes the true descendants of slavery and possibly the indigenous peoples' ancestry unique within our neighborhoods, our towns, set aside from racially-based reparations. It's about the bloodline, the lineage, some of our grandmothers, great-grandmothers. Put some respect on it. So, be it as it relates to this hearing in connection to particularly 1865 to 1965, they can put a satellite up in space to find a grape on the concrete, they can find the true descendants of slavery and/or the indigenous people, particularly because the others simply most likely were not here. That is known.
Thirty seconds.
Most of us...
Time's up?
Thirty seconds.
Oh, okay. Well, this is a new era that is known apparently. Not all came here by slave ships. That is known apparently. We may have predictions already that says we possibly shall remain one of the top players within the new era, possibly cut the check and possibly allot the land to the true descendants of slavery and indigenous people.
Thank you.
Do further research.
Thank you.
Contact me if possible.
Next up is Ms. Green Johnson, Catherine Green Johnson, Danita Brennan, Brennan, Ayesha Smith, Cash Gaines. Oh, I thought that was you. I'm so sorry. You're next then, Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ma'am, what was your name? I'm sorry.
My name is...
No, the one who just spoke.
I want to go.
Got you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. How are you today? I am Maureen Miller, a direct descendant of the Black Indians and descendants of African Black slaves who never migrated to this country on a passport, visa, work permit, or for educational purposes. But I'm gonna talk about the money. I'm gonna talk about the eligibility requirements so that you guys can give to Hochul and to the state legislation. It has to be written correctly. We have people in positions of power that yield titles, that have titles, but they yield no power. So, this is the blueprint. Kathy Hochul has the original copy, and I'm gonna tell it like it is right here. All right? Now, eligibility requirements for reparations, calendar year 2025 and onwards. Eligibility requirements for reparations, calendar year 2025 and onwards. The requirements are as follows. Direct bloodline is required for first-time payments and/or land allowances payable to indigenous peoples' ancestors and/or descendants of slaves whose ancestors were here since If there is one parent of direct blood lineage by marriage who is a direct descendant as stated above in number one, then the requirement for eligibility will be distributed after first-time payment distributees as stated above. In order to promote healing and reconciliation and further unity, we all must consider that prior to 1865... I'm sorry. Will be distributed after... Let me redo that. I retract it. If there is one parent of direct blood lineage by marriage who is a direct descendant as stated above in number one...
Thirty seconds.
Then the requirement for eligibility will be distributed after first-time distributees as stated above. In order to promote healing and reconciliation and further unity, we all must consider that prior to 1865, prior to 1965, we were predominantly considered as Black, White, or Malado, including our offspring. Most statistical data and demographics have proven...
Thank you.
Have proven the original indigenous peoples' ancestors or descendants of slavery in the city.
Ms. Miller, thank you.
1965 are nearly extinct.
Thank you.
Ms. Miller, thank you.
We have many people behind you that have to speak. You can, if you can please submit it to the commission.
I will, but I have three lines that I've gotta get out, and it's gonna get out. Therefore, reparations is proven by direct bloodline to descendants of African-American Blacks.
Thank you.
Ms. Miller, we have to consider you now.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. We appreciate your contribution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Hochul has the original.
Thank you.
Just a reminder, for everyone who exceeds their time, everyone else who is behind them has to wait. If you would like to submit the fullness of your testimony, please make sure that we get that. Otherwise, everyone has to wait.
Could you repeat the order for the next individuals?
Catherine Green Johnson, is that you? Okay. Danita Brahman, Ayesha Smith, Cash Gaines, and Derek Walker.
Good evening, commissioners and community. My name is Catherine, I'm Bolly Green Johnson. I'm the daughter of Sarah, who's the daughter of Annie, who's the daughter of Josephine, and who's the daughter of Lucinda. I come before you today not only as an advocate for reparations, but also someone whose life has been profoundly shaped by the very systems of racial injustices this committee seeks to address. I grew up now far from here in Rosedale, Queens. My parents, like so many families, Black families, made the great migration from the South. My mother from Southport, North Carolina, where some of our family experienced the Wilmington massacre, much like what occurred in Tulsa, Oklahoma. My father from Charleston, South Carolina, where upon his transition, I was able to trace five generations of my paternal line to Strawberry Plantation, which was a nine-hundred acre plantation that my family nurtured without compensation. They came, they came north for opportunities, they migrated to Harlem, then Brooklyn, and finally settled in Rosedale to create a home for our family. They came with hopes of building a stable future, believing the promise of homeownership and community. But many, like, but many of you may be familiar with the racialized violence and harassment that Black families like mine faced with moving into predominantly white neighborhoods like Rosedale. My parents endured threats, hostility, and acts of violence meant to push us out. Still, they held on, determined to give us a future rooted in safety and possibility. But that possibility was shattered again when our community was hit by the crack cocaine epidemic, a manufactured crisis that intentionally devastated Black and Brown communities across the country, families torn apart. Generational wealth and stability were stolen once more through criminalization, addiction, and mass incarceration, all deliberate policies designed to disrupt and destroy Black lives. By the time I was sixteen, I had lost several brilliant and talented friends and members of family that died. I'm sorry, I'm gonna pause for one second. I'll go.
I may.
I'll go.
I may.
Thank you. Through it all, my father remained committed to Rosedale, living there until his intently passing in 2020 from COVID-19, a pandemic that exposed the harsh reality of racial injustices, I'm sorry, inequalities...
Thirty seconds.
In this community. Thank you. He kept his doctors here at the Hip肉Rochdale Center and endured many other instances of inequities. This history, my history, our history drives my commitment to restoring justice and why I founded the Art of Reparations, an initiative that centers artists and culture bureaus in this reparations movement. Artist power, artist memory, artist resistance, artist of cultural...
Thank you.
Thank you, artist of cultural stewardess. Sorry. I just also see my work as a part of...
Thank you, Ms. Green Johnson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Please submit. Please submit it into the public record.
My name is Danita Brennan. I am the co-chair of the Middle Collegiate Church Reparations Task Force. Middle Church is a member of the New Yorkers for Reparations Coalition. I'm here to read the testimony of Antare Rakeesh Keath, a New Yorker and educator now living in Germany. He testifies today as a Black New Yorker and the chair of the Democrats abroad reparations task force. His testimony reads as follows. My advocacy was inspired by my late father, Bill Keath, a civil rights activist who was unjustly incarcerated twice in New York. Framed for murder while a minor, my dad was initially sent to New York's Elmira Reformatory, which during Jim Crow functioned as little more than a prison for Black children, subjecting many to barbaric conditions such as torture via a sensory deprivation chamber. Shortly after I was born in the Bronx in 1985, my father was sent to Rikers Island on a false gun possession charge. Although he survived, the effects of both incarceration remained. Due to my father's circumstances, my own life trajectory, access to wealth, and chances for success were heavily pulled down. As a child in the Hudson Valley, I was subjected to eviction, chronic housing insecurity, and the vulturous child protection services, affecting my safety, education, and future livelihood. Know that New York's predatory policing system directly impacts families like mine, even if we have never been arrested. The only way to escape the built-in systematic limitations imposed on me was to leave. Although I lived in Germany, I did not come merely for an adventure or curiosity. I came because I could no longer breathe in New York. The harms we faced impact our physical ability to escape. I would not have been able to leave had it not been for a generous infusion of capital from a person who, unlike me, had access to generational wealth. I therefore call for an inclusion approach to reparations by extending...
Thank you so much.
Eligibility to Black New Yorkers who have either fled or returned out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please submit that into the public record if you'd like to.
I wanna ask, before Ms. Smith comes, if you'd just give me one second, to allow the senator to come back up and say a few words. I'd appreciate it. Then you're up next, Ms. Smith.
Hello, hello. First, I want to express my pride in all of y'all for coming on out here to express everything that you have wanted to do. I want to express my pride and gratitude to this great commission, and I want to encourage us to do a couple of things. First things first, we can before our issues without being against anybody else's. We don't need to be against any other group to get to where we need to go. We just need to be clear in our issues and move on that. The second is a thing called political maturity. Political maturity says that we can disagree without becoming disagreeable. We can disagree without making any type of personal attacks on anyone. We can just say how we differ and take that as a position. That is the position of Southeast Queens and this talented 10th district that you're in. I welcome you as guests to this area and as guests to it. I hope that you got some home training. Otherwise, you need not come here to say things of this nature. We don't do that here. Since this is being televised, it is necessary to go on the record and say these things so that no one can get up there and say, "Things were said and no one said anything about them." Therefore, this group condones this type of stuff, and we do not condone any of those things. That won't get us to the liberation that we're looking for. Since the vast majority of us showed incredible discipline, with incredible respect to one another, I really appreciate all the stuff, and I hope that everybody else learns from those folk who were showing that type of discipline. Since your name was called out, Dr. Ron Daniels, I apologize to you on behalf of the talented 10th Senatorial District, which does not condone anybody being called out of their name or any of those things. We do not do that here, and that is not correct for what the reparations panel... I thank you again for giving me the moment. I hope that y'all have enjoyed what's happening on the ground, the talented 10th. We invite you back, as a matter of fact. We will submit all of these things. I trust y'all will. I will uphold your position whether I agree with it or not. You got a right to your position, and I'm gonna fight as hard as I can to make sure that you are heard, even if I disagree with the position that you're doing, because that's the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Sanders. Ms. Smith, you're next.
Dr. Daniels, did you wanna speak?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ayesha Smith, and I proudly represent my lineage and culture as a Black American from Brooklyn East Flatbush. My ancestry traces back to 1865. American childhood slavery were roots in South Carolina on my father's side and connections to North Carolina Cherokee Indian heritage on my mother's side. I am a descendant from a resilient family line in Southampton, Virginia, including my fifth great cousin Nathaniel Nat Turner, a freedom fighter who embodies our bloodline legacy. New York City is a tapestry of over 1,000 ethnic groups, yet the history and culture of Black Americans like myself are often too overlooked or erased. We must acknowledge the fact that we are the only ethnic group with roots in this land dating back centuries. Throughout my, throughout pivotal moments in American history, like the Revolutionary War, the Civil War, and the Vietnam, my family has fought courageously, often at great costs. Yet our communities have been devastated by the influx of drugs that have plagued our neighborhoods and my own father and own wounds. It is time for Black Americans to receive reparations. Other groups have been compensated, including Native Americans, Japanese Americans, and even individuals who recently entered this country unlawfully. The discrepancy is unjust, and we need reparations like yesterday. While understanding the desire for studies or reparations, we must shift our focus to actionable solutions. Billions are sent abroad while Black Americans are told to... Billions are sent abroad while black Americans are told to pull ourselves out of bootstraps and receive medical support. Our ancestors built this nation, endured post-traumatic slavery, medical apartheid, and unpaid labor. We must advocate for lineage-based reparations specifically for black American descendants. I stand in solidarity with my brothers and sisters from the diaspora, but today we must prioritize the needs of black Americans. I thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cash Gaines?
Che, che. Sheesh. What's good? So my name is Cash Gaines. I'm a black American on both sides of my family, just for context of the conversation. Uh, I'm a millennial, and I support cash payment reparations specifically. Uh, I want to shout out the OGs and all the younger people than me here, not a lot of us, and to those who are watching online on social media. Uh, again, I want to stress the demand for direct cash payments for the economic depravity and unpaid generational, unpaid, uh, slave labor. Generational economic harm, not just prejudice, to be clear. There was actually a German-American in this audience tonight who, along with five other authors, wrote a paper called "Well Implications for Slavery," where he was able to quantify, with a 24-hour day's wage, had we have just received the minimum wage or the unskilled labor wage during slavery times, that our ancestors with a 3% interest rate would be owed trillions of dollars, but at a 6% interest rate would be owed, uh, uh, 6.6 quadrillion dollars, which is 15 zeros, 151 million per black American. I'm not demanding that New York State advocates for that, but I will mention that Oregon has suggested Senate Bill 619. Now it's called 776, but when it was 619, that bill suggested anyone with just one ancestor who was enslaved in America, who's 18 years of age or older, that they would be owed $123,000 a year in lifetime payments, tax-free. I argue that if Oregon is willing to suggest that and New York State's cost of living is higher, that our payout should be higher. Similarly, the only other thing I wanted to mention is our 40 acres. The sister mentioned our land earlier. I just wanted to say that I know it's gonna be up to y'all to discover how much land is still owned by the federal government for us to be allocated these lands, but I want to clarify that our own peoples, specifically younger people than me, have made it very clear that it doesn't need to be land they live on. They don't care if white folks is on it or need to get off of it, but we can start with places like Seneca Village, where it's just Central Park. There's no one currently living there that would be displaced, and housing that would be built there would appreciate in value exponentially since it's one of the most expensive rows of houses, uh, in all of America. Uh, um, and I want to shout out Senator James Sanders, because as a young person, reparations wasn't something I was looking too much into until I started hearing about cash payments. And Senator James Sanders mentioned our 40 acres, and he mentioned an EV as an update to the mule. I definitely think we need to be speaking about what an update to the mule could look like to get the youth back interested in this conversation. Lastly, I want to shout out the ADO West Foundation website, where you can find an entire Black agenda along with what we're owed as far as our cash payments. Thank you for the time.
Derek Walker. Nehemiah Roll, Ibrahim XAYU. And Annette Wilcox.
How ya doing?
Hi.
So I'm probably young enough to be any one of you guys up there, son, so I'm speaking to my elders. First of all, I want to thank you guys for everything that you've done so far, and I do ask you, um, to take this situation serious. This is about our grandchildren, my grandchildren. I have no children as of yet, but I do plan on having some in the future. Reparations is about a debt owed. It's about cash. We're talking lineage. We're not talking anything else. We're not talking people of color, disenfranchised communities. We're talking about our lineage, people that come from this origin. I was one of those people in 2024 that voted couch. I did not vote for Kamala Harris. I did not vote for Donald Trump. If you want our vote, the young, the grassroots, you're gonna have to pledge tangibles specifically to us. We just saw what happened to Jordan Neely. Jordan Neely was just strangled. We need, reparations starts with cash, but it does not end there. We actually need an anti-black crime bill to add on to our reparations. No one should be able to harm me and then go home at the end of the night. The man wasn't even arrested. So again, we're talking cash. 20 trillion, I think my brother Cash just said it, we're talking cash payments specifically to the descendants of American slaves, not the Americas as in South, um, and Central. We're talking about North American, this government. So again, I thank you so much for your time. Oh, by the way, we do not support HR40. We do not support a study. We've been studying for 400 years. We're done studying. Thank you so much for your courage for doing this. And again, this is someone speaking to his elders. Thank you again. Much love.
Nehemiah Roll.
Hello, family. My name is Nehemiah Roll Jr. I was born in Queens in St. Albans, and, uh, my family came here in the 40s. Uh, just to give a contextual background to the history, it's so important. Um, I understand, and people need to understand, this is a state commission where the federal government has dropped the ball. Our politicians, our leaders, our people that are out there have not, I know some of them, um, that are involved in the reparations movement. Um, so this is a state, uh, uh, effort, a state commission, what New York State is going to do. And I can understand why people in California, um, that were speaking today, they don't want what happened in California to happen in New York. I understand this is guided by legislation. I'm in the legal profession. Okay, so I understand. What I want the commission to take, focus on, okay, is like what everybody been saying is the numbers, okay? Because we're talking about numbers. I have, we're looking at, uh, New York State GDP on a state level, you're talking something like 2.2, 2.3 billion, trillion dollars. Um, if they were to pay every traditional black American, and we're talking about lineage, okay, in the state of New York, okay, that can prove that they have roots into slavery with the lineage, you're talking about $3 trillion. If you're just using the $600,000 number for 3 million, okay? New York State used to have, uh, at least the highest amount of blacks living in the state. Now they done dropped to fourth place. But I have an alternative, um, process, um, that we could do, that needs to be considered by the legislature, is that instead of giving money and those, we should consider the cash option, but we also consider a voucher option. As a part of my class action lawsuit that I would bring, that we're bringing with my company, BlackOrlando.com, and that would be free education through Harvard, okay? Free healthcare, Cadillac plan for the rest of your life. Free transportation throughout the United States, free housing. So instead of the money, give a voucher. A voucher would cover getting a house. A voucher would cover traveling throughout the United States for the rest of your life. A voucher would get free healthcare, Cadillac plan. A voucher would cover free education on the state level. So those particular things would, instead of the money...
Thirty seconds.
Instead of the money, we can have the voucher. And that needs to be put into the legislation, but it does need to cover descendants of, uh, black American ancestry that were involved in slave, slave trade and slavery. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, I'm gonna hold it. I can't get it down. Okay. So, um, my name's Annette Wilcox. I'm the great-great-granddaughter of Archibald Mowgli, who was born in 1826 in Georgia, whose name is on the 1870 census, which is the first census that included, uh, black Americans. And the question I want to ask is how can you repair a people if you fail to identify who those people are? And something this commission can do right now is to vote to formally recognize American freedmen, descendants of those people enslaved in the United States as a sole community of eligibility for any reparations program in New York State. Two, I urge the commission to support and recommend the establishment of a Freedman Bureau in New York, which would be tasked with managing all aspects of reparations implementation. And finally, I call on the reparations commission to endorse Bill A10245, sponsored by Nikki Lucas, which mandates a disaggregation of data for black African-American community in New York State. This would mirror a bill that all the legislators in New York State supported that was signed by Governor Hochul in December 2021, which requires the collection of socioeconomic data of the AAPI community. You have to identify who a people are to repair them. Today, American freedmen were reigned at the bottom of every socioeconomic metrics, 1/10 of the wealth of whites, 43% to 48% of incarcerated population, 56% of New York City's homeless population. Unemployment is two times that of whites, a statistic unchanged since 1954 when data was first collected. Race-based policies have been illegal in the U.S. since the 1970s, yet commissions, nonprofits, NGOs, and think tanks still use race as a guiding framework. However, when it comes to implementing solutions, they dilute resources and benefits to include oil, all. In New York City, there are multiple initiatives and laws that reference slavery, Jim Crow, and discrimination ad infinitum, yet none of these deal with the specificity of American freedmen. The Racial Duchess Commission, New York City Commission, helped amend the city charter to address, quote, racial equality and inclusiveness. It used the history of American freedmen, but the benefits go to everyone else. Why was this called a racial equity bill? Likewise, the New York State Reparations Commission has used 190-year history of legal anti-freedman laws as justification for the commission's work, yet it seeks to minimize and exclude freedmen as qualifying for reparations because our ancestors weren't enslaved in New York. No, our ancestors will only be victims of the massive industrial slavery in the South in the 1800s that built the economy of New York State and New York City.
Thank you.
To leave us out of that is a crime. Thank you.
Please submit, uh, please submit your full testimony if you'd like for us to have it.
We're doing well on time. We have 10 speakers left to come forward. Next up is Ibrahim Oik Au, if you're here, it's last call for you. Boyk? Brick? Brook? I'm not sure. B-R-E-U-K? Okay. Following Divine Prince, Samuel Witherspoon, Veronica Nikki, and Brother Charles Mitchell. You're next. Thank you.
Who is eligible for reparations? This is a crucial question that needs to be answered to ensure that the outcome is legal and effective. It is important to note that affirmative action was recently struck down by the Supreme Court because it was based on race. The only way for any form of reparations to be legally sound is if they are applied to a federally recognized status, such as freedmen and all the black or Negro people on the 1870 census and their descendants. Reparations based on race will face challenges at every level. It is not legally permissible for reparations to be given to all black New Yorkers, but they can be given to freedmen. The terms "freedmen" and "freed women" refer to the former African slaves who were emancipated by the Emancipation Proclamation and the 13th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. This approach has been successful for other groups, such as the Japanese Americans. In 1988, the Civil Liberties Act provided $20,000 to each of the approximately 60,000 living Japanese Americans who were interned during World War II. Not all Japanese Americans received reparations, only those who were directly affected by the internment camps and their descendants. The other Japanese people did not oppose this distinction. Similarly, Native Americans have received compensation for land and other benefits after being forcibly removed from their native lands. In 1971, the U.S. government gave Native American Eskimos and Aleuts, um, 962 million worth of land in Alaska in exchange for relinquishing their Aboriginal claims to the rest of the state. This legal strategy has been successful in providing reparations to specific groups. If the commission proceeds with reparations for any recipients other than freedmen, we the freedmen will question the commission's true intentions. We have often seen our efforts for justice redirected to other communities, resulting in centuries of ongoing harm without resolution, and communities who were not in the country at the time of our enslavement receiving benefits for what we fought for, leaving us without repair even after all of these years. Dr. Daniel brought up reparations, brought up the reparations commission in California, and we should discuss it. The Democratic Party, the Democratic leadership purposely waited until the last moment to bring the bill for a vote and ultimately refused to do so, preventing it to be, preventing it from being voted on. We are aware of the political tactics used to sabotage the well-crafted and legally sound bill of the California Family Vote for Reparations and the Freedmen. To continue with that language is not legally actionable, and we will know your true intentions, and we will know that that was the plan all along.
Thank you.
All right, don't start the clock yet. I just wanted to say is, this is gonna come out probably really fast, because Buffalo have four minutes each, we only got three, so I had to shrink this down. All right, here we go. My name is Divine Prince, and I'm the son of multi-generation New Yorkers by way of Georgia and the Carolinas, and I'm the president of the US Freedom Project. Sadly, we are the only organization based in New York advocating exclusively for black Americans, those families that earned the status of freedmen in the USA, and the only organization to teach a workshop on reparations for legislators and the public at the Black, Puerto Rican, Hispanic, and Asian Caucus since this bill was introduced. This is the definition of African American according to the federal government. African American, any person having origins in any of the black racial groups of Africa. This means black Americans are African American, Afro-Caribians are African American, and continental Africans are African American. Hell, Afro-Latino slash Hispanics are African Americans. Question and answer. If you're able to be you and you're able to be me, who am I? Nobody. Though I don't agree with him much politically when it comes to black Americans, Mark Lamont Hill wrote a book titled "Nobody," where that title was chosen to highlight that after Mike Brown was lynched by Darren Wilson, his body laid in the streets for hours like he didn't belong to nobody, like he was a nobody. Fast forward today, you get a Daniel Penny being braided around as a hero because he lynched Jordan Neely, who was perceived as a special needs nobody, that didn't belong to nobody. It's a dangerous reality for black Americans to have always been more than somebody, the foundation of this very country everyone else gets to come to for an American dream. Race has relegated us to political nobodies. You see, there are only two groups in the USA that are not immigrants, the Native Americans and the American freedmen. And New York State Bill 807828B, the bill that the black American grassroots urged New York State to vote on instead of this one, American freedmen is defined as follows. Those persons who have at least one ancestor that was enslaved in United States of America who was emancipated in 1863 by way of the Emancipation Proclamation, or 1865 by way of the 13th Amendment to the Constitution, and have been dispelled their rights as citizens due to the badges and since the vestiges of slavery. It is a class of people based on their status, not based on their race. Why is race so problematic outside of the fact that it's unconstitutional? How do we get here? I'm glad you asked. In a New York Times article published on September 20th, 1865, then-governor of South Carolina Benjamin Perry said, "In order for us to get back into the Union, we have to ratify the 13th Amendment. Until this is done, the Negroes will be protected as freedmen." He understood that because in March of that same year, 1865, Congress created the Freedmen's Bank and the Freedmen's Bureau, according to the American Freedman Inquiry Commission of 1863.
Thirty seconds.
But Senator Charles Sumner said, "We need a Freedmen's Bureau, not because these people are Negroes, but because they are men that for generations have been dispelled their rights." See, that argument won the day against a race-based rebuttal. As published today in the New York Sun, "New York Efforts to Pay Slave Reparations Will Be Vigorously Challenged," says the man behind Supreme Court's front-of-action case. "Racial Justice Will Never Be Reparations. Let's Get It Right."
Thank you.
Samuel Witherspoon, Veronica Nikki, Charles Mitchell, Alfredo Nimbo Jr., and Diana Rose. I'll go back through it one more time. Samuel Witherspoon, Veronica Nikki, Charles Mitchell, Alfredo Nimbo, Newbo, Diana Rose. Okay. Chaplain Sandra Mitchell, Siobhan Salam, Don Sudek... Chaplain Sandra Mitchell, Shavon Salam, Don Sudan Law.
Are we set on the order?
No Samuel Witherspoon, no Mickey, Ms. Mickey, no Charles Mitchell. So then you're next, Mr. Mitch, Mr. Mitchell.
Who's at the mic?
No, no, she's after me.
I'm not quite sure why she's not getting up to speak. They have a particular order. If they skip you, they're not gonna come back to you. That's why I'm telling you to come up here. Excuse me.
So please read the order one more time, just so we can be clear. It's getting close to the end.
Mr. Mitchell would be next. What's your name? Oh, you're Ms. Nikki, okay. You're next, and then Mr. Mitchell.
I'm gonna start with, they had no problems with slave ships. They didn't matter where it came from. Eighteen sixty-five, they promised southern states forty acres. I'm gonna fast forward to the curriculum of occlusions and the fact that America used to be very competitive in education. We are not number one. We're below a hundred and sixty, and education is very important. When it came to Zionists or reparations for people coming out of Japan and so forth, there weren't all these studies. We need to cut the check now. The studies have already been written. We know that there are solutions that could be given, and there should be free college. It should be free train fees. People shouldn't be getting shot for two dollars and ninety cents. The fact that Israel could get forty-two billion dollars since twenty-twelve, they should be able to fund us, people that are here in America. And no matter where they are in the world, we know that they are funded. Presently, people can come here now on the planes free. So it is what we choose to do, and it is time for us to fund each other. We need to free the Panthers now, not tomorrow. We can take twenty dollars and give, whether it's a dollar each, if one million people gave a dollar each to specific organizations, people that they know, not people that they stick in front of us with the nonsense and the shenanigans. We need reparations now. All the studies have already been done. They have been done for years, whether it was your college, Queen Mother Moore, the studies have been written, it is documented. When they sit here and they talk about giving your John Hancock, John Hancock was a slaver, an accountant, a Zionist accountant. So the records are there. They know how many people that they killed, they know the names, they know the houses, they know the properties that they've stolen. We need our land now. Cut the check, cut the check. Reparations now.
Thank you.
You can.
Wouldn't that work if her, me fighting to get her to come up here? So first of all, I want to extend greetings, some of you I know, Sister Lori Daines Favors, Baba Ron Daines, I know. Many of you I do not know in this audience, but I have to applaud you all for staying as long as you stay here tonight. And as we come up here and give these testimonies, I want to remind you of something that Reverend James Bevill, one of our civil rights leaders, said. It's not about our subjective impersonal, it's about being objective and constitutional, meaning that it's not time for us to get in our emotions, though we may be feeling the pains of this. We have to be cold-blooded and calculating to deal with this political machine that we have to deal with, that is not these commissioners, it's the people behind them. Who chose the commissioners? Why did they choose the commissioners? There's only two people that I personally know, and I've been in a struggle for a long time, there's only two people on here that I know that have been doing work for a long time in terms of reparations, and that's Baba Ron Daines and that Sister Lori Favors. And not to slight any of the other folks that are here and those that are not here but still on the commission, but there was a reason that folks were chosen, and we have to make sure that we put pressure on these politicians that are making these decisions on our behalf. So it's not time for y'all to get in your feelings, it's time for y'all to get serious. We're an African family. We cannot just argue in, in New York City and New York State, the bastion of American financial capital that affected every African throughout the world that was taken home from their motherland, every African that we now call, uh, every person that we now call African that is indeed really the indigenous people of these lands, and that knowledge is stolen from us. When we talk about reparations, we're talking about that bag, yes, but we're also talking about repair. Many of us don't know our lineage. Many of us don't know if we African-American, if we a mixture of African-American and indigenous people, if we have Caribbean people in our bloodline, and some of us have all of that going on. That's what we need to repair. We need to find out those truths. Yes, we need to get that money, but if you give the people that don't have healing money, it's like throwing good after bad. Y'all feel me? I know you want the bag, I know you want that bag, and we deserve that bag. There's for some harms that we all need to get addressed, the harms in education, the miseducation of our children, so that they hate themselves and they don't love what it is to be Black. We're talking about miseducation of young brothers. We see all these young brothers out now that are on these streets homeless and insane. How many of those young brothers is in the school system and misdiagnosed with special education and given drugs? And the system made money off of giving them drugs, made money off of giving them, uh, misdiagnosing them with special ed. So we have to look at everything that's going on around us and, and.
Thank you.
Some decisions, but one thing I would like to say.
Time's up, sir.
Wait, hold on a second.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Can you just hold on one second? I would like to ask you, as you go back to the state commission to demand that they put pressure on Congress to pass reparations in your, in your recommendations, I want you to demand that you be able to access those in the community, like that elder that was just up here.
Thank you, sir.
That was involved in Encopro for years. There are people that are in this community right here in New York City that have been here for decades working on reparations, and they should have some input on what's going on in this. And finally, when we deal with criminalization of our young people.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, sir.
Just one more thing, I'm sorry.
We do appreciate.
When we deal with the criminalization of our young people, one thing that we can do immediately for all these young brothers that were arrested on nonviolent offenses in terms of marijuana.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. We'll take your testimony.
Make sure that they are first in line for these marijuana dispensary licenses, first in line to get training to grow marijuana.
Mr. Mitchell, we have to continue.
I love us, but it was a lot of us today. Good evening. My name is Diana Rose, and I am a community member here, a business owner here in southeast Queens. Thank you, Senator Sanders, for having this forum for us to be able to speak today. Thank you, sir. Good night, everyone. I stand before you today as a business owner, a community cultivator, and most importantly, as someone deeply, emotionally, mentally, physically, and financially invested in the future of our communities. A steward of legacy that stretches beyond myself, one rooted in resilience, burdened by a history of theft, exploitation, and gration. Today, I speak on reparations not as a theoretical concept, but as an essential step toward justice, equity, and restoration, as a moral and economic imperative, one that holds the power to restore not just what was taken, but that which is systematically denied for generations. Let us be clear. This nation's wealth was built on stolen labor that generated untold riches for a country that never intended to share them with those who paid the greatest price. That theft was compounded by centuries of Jim Crow laws, redlining, and policies that Black, blocked Black families from owning land, gaining education, and building businesses. Generational wealth and inheritance that many take for granted was violently ripped away from us. As a business owner, I understand the power of capital, not as an abstract currency, but as something, but as, but as an opportunity to build, to expand, and to create. Capital allows me to hire, it allows me to invest and to uplift, but imagine trying to build when your foundation is intentionally sabotaged, when access to funding is blocked, when systems are designed to exclude you, and even when the act of creating is met with destruction, as we saw in Tulsa, Rosewood, and countless other Black communities. As a business owner, it is capital that allows us to grow, to hire, to invest in new opportunities, and to build wealth. But here's the truth. Black Americans were systematically denied the ability to access that same capital for generations. The wealth that should have been ours through land ownership, fair wages, or entrepreneurial opportunities. Reparations are not simply about writing a check, as my brother said, they're about rebuilding that foundation, they're about providing access to capital that allows Black families to buy homes, send our children to schools that nourish their dreams, and to invest that businesses that create lasting legacies. And to make no mistake, a nation that neglects the economic health of its citizens cripples itself. When Black communities strive, entire economies grow. When equity becomes policy, prosperity becomes our collective. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. These are the final names, Don Sudan Law, Chaplain Sandra Mitchell, Sharon Salam, and Reverend Phyllis Coachman.
Hello, I'd like to thank the Governor Poco and the commissioners that were appointed by her, and everyone that's here tonight. Sudan, I'm seventy-four years old, I'm descendants of mulattoes and slaves, and what I would like to do is to speak on some of my brothers and sisters that are alive, that are not here, those who were incarcerated, that have been incarcerated for life, and some of them have passed since, but incarcerated not for committing crime, but for being descendants of so-called slaves. And just because they were not of the right color, have done life and are doing life now, are doing years, being locked up today from the past up into today and tomorrow. I would suggest and recommend that most of my sisters and brothers who are incarcerated for nonviolent crimes or who have done five years incarcerated should be released from jail and not have to be in jail for just being descendants of slaves, and this should be a part of the reparations, not to mention other living sisters and brothers that are, you can say, incarcerated in nursing homes that are dilapidated and just tore up and just suffering worse than homeless people. We have an influx of migrant and immigrant people coming to this country that are being served and taken care of. What about us? I have nothing against anyone, but I have a lot that we should do for ourselves, and reparations should be identified with that. Awesome.
Thank you. Peace and blessings to everyone. Assalamualaikum.
Assalamualaikum. Uh, my name is Chaplain Sandra Mitchell. I am the chairperson for Housing at the National Action Network, and I am also the VP of Education at the National Action Network. I'm also a member of CASA, Community Action for Safe Apartments, and the Right to Counsel Coalition, and the Northwest Bronx Community Clergy Coalition. It is an honor to be in your presence. It makes me tremble to know what you have to go through in order to help us to try to fix the wrongs of the past, and I mean that with all sincerity. I respect you. I pray, I will continue to pray for you, for you to have guidance of the Holy Spirit to turn this thing around. This is not something that we can do just by writing that check. By profession, I am a behavior health specialist, mental health counselor, and substance misuse counselor. My job is not easy, where I'm counseling people that look like me, that don't look like me, but have the same problems that I have. Emotions have to be kept in check at all times. Our people have suffered and suffered and suffered, so now we implode upon ourselves. I apologize for the emotions that were, that were strewn at you, but I know that you know that it's not personal, it is our pain. First, we need to heal ourselves. The American Indians are gathering in small groups to heal themselves, and I went to a conference in, uh, it was in Chicago about ten years ago, and they said, "First, we'll heal ourselves as Native American Indians, but then, and then we'll come to heal you." I can't even imagine the pain and the psychological destruction of my ancestors who are Cherokee Indian, and the Trail of Tears, and the promises that they would have sacred land, going to be told, "Oh, we found oil, now you gotta move." They're all over this country, we are one. I don't know how reparations could be doled out, but education is the key, job training, skill training, we have that in our DNA. We also have post-traumatic stress disorder in our DNA. I, I will continue to pray for God's guidance in each and every one of you, in your, in your attempt to right these wrongs. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chaplain. We have hit the nine fifteen mark. This is the last call for anyone who would like to sign up fresh to, um, to give testimony. This is the last call. And we'll continue on with Ms. Salam and Reverend Coachman. Ms. Salam? So Reverend Coachman, you're next, and you're last, if there are no others who'd like to sign up for testimony.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, my name is Reverend Phyllis Coachman, and I am a founding member of the U.S. Freedmen The introduction and evolution of reparations legislation in New York and also in the United States. The early bills that were introduced were bills for African Americans, and that was stated from the first bill that was introduced by Charles Barron in twenty seventeen. Another bill was introduced in twenty twenty-one by Senator Jabari Brisport, and that was also for African Americans, and then another bill in twenty twenty-two was introduced by Assemblywoman Michelle Salages, which was for African Americans, and then another bill was introduced, and that bill, uh, was introduced by Senator Sanders, and that was also for African Americans. And then, um, in twenty twenty-three, January twentieth, twenty twenty-three, a bill was introduced for people of African descent. Now, prior to that, twenty twenty-three, all bills were for African Americans, and at this time, African Americans were for those who were enslaved, descendants of those who were enslaved in America. So the switch from African Americans to those who, um, African, people of African descent. So what brought the change on? We believe that there were some people who were instrumental, and in getting it passed, going to the legislators and telling them, "No, it should be for all people of African descent," which we know is unconstitutional. So we know and we believe that it's, it's really no transparency. So we're just hoping that this commission will not be bullied or not be influenced by a few legacy organizations that consider themselves a few legacy organizations that consider themselves, which they are not, the most important people to decide on reparations. Reparations is for those, for us, for our ancestors. And it really bothers me when I hear people who are black immigrants from this country telling our history, oh, slavery and the lynching, and then they say, our ancestors. No, that's not your ancestors. Your ancestors were enslaved in the Caribbean. You have Caracan. Caracan is fighting for reparations for people in the Caribbean countries. So why did you think you gotta come in our claim for reparations? It's not fair. So do the right thing. And we say, stand up and take a stand and be strong and do what's right. And that's reparations. Reparations now for the descendants of those enslaved in America and emancipated in 1865.
Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Coachman. Thank you to everyone who's given, provided testimony tonight. We do encourage you to please send your written statements in to our website, submit them there. They are on record, but we'd love to have you submit them there at www.ny.gov/reparations and we'll be able to codify them with your testimonies that given tonight. On behalf of our chair in her absence, I want to thank the entire commission for being here tonight, thanking Senator, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Dr. Ron Daniels. I just wanted to thank the entire commission on behalf of our chairwoman who's, um, not here. She had to go back home, but she was here most of the time with us. For all of the commissioners who came on out tonight, we are grateful for you all and I'm happy to be on this commission with you all.
And I believe Dr. Daniels does still have a point to make. Yes. One, one moment, sir. One of the, Dr. Daniels is going to speak.
So just one, two, three. Madam Vice Chair, I just wanted to be clear that as a part of these proceedings, there are space for the commissioners to at least respond to what they've heard.
Of course.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear. I wasn't sure, right?
Yeah, I, I don't, you know what? I don't think we have a hardened base on it, but of course we should be able to.
All right, well, I didn't necessarily want to be the first person to speak, but I, I, I will take that opportunity. Couple of things I want to do in terms of just acknowledgements. I'm going to give a shout out to WBAI because WBAI was actively involved in getting the information out about, um, about the, um, the hearing and, um, want to express that appreciation. Secondly, I want to express appreciation to, um, Assemblywoman Salages and certainly Senator Sanders for their support. And also to say, Senator Sanders, I appreciate you, um, coming to my defense, but it comes with the territory. I mean, this is what we're here to do and this is what we're here to be about. The next thing I want to say is I profoundly appreciate the, the, the energy, the interests, the intensity of the positions that have been articulated. I found it all, um, very, very, very heartening, uh, in terms of where we've come with the reparations, reparations struggle. And I'll say that admittedly as an OG that has been involved in this work for most of my life. I just want to make a few, uh, comments, um, in response to what has been said, because I think we need to continue this dialogue. I, I said earlier that we have, um, folks who have most recently engaged in the struggle and that's a good thing and that brought a lot of energy to the struggle. Um, uh, and that's why we need to have a dialogue in terms of how we move forward. And I appreciate Senator Sanders' notion that we can disagree without being disagreeable and we can debate our positions. And there's a lot of debate going on about, you know, the, the nature of what reparations should look like. Let me first and foremost say that the National African American Reparations Commission, for that very reason, uh, put together a document called a 10-point reparations program to be instructive and to be helpful. So we can add that, I wish you would, or add that to your resource material, again, put together by people who are long-term advocates, uh, in this struggle. I'd like to also say that there were organizations mentioned, like in Copeur. December 12th movement, I think, was also referenced among the, the Black United Front was mentioned. Now, the last time I checked, those are grassroots organizations. These are not elite organizations. These are not organizations that are disconnected to the masses of our people. These are organizations that are grassroots organization. So when you stand up and say the grassroots, you can speak for your grassroots organization, but it is not the only grassroots organization. There are many of them out there and our responsibility is to hear from all of them. The other thing, as a matter of correction, there was a, there was a, there was a, there was a, a brother who I'm sure is, and I appreciated his energy too and want to continue to have a conversation with him as well, is HR 40, uh, which he opposes, is no longer a study bill and has not been for several years now. HR, uh, HR 40, yes, is a study bill, but it is a bill to study and develop reparations proposals. It is a remedy bill. It's designed to actually come up with proposals that are actionable, provided the people rallied behind them and organized to, uh, to push them across the finish line. The last series of comments I want to make are about our internal view of ourselves. Now reparations by definition, reparations for African Americans or people of African descent, blacks, Americans are, is by definition for enslavement, yes, but it is for all of the legacies of enslavement. That's the definition of, that, uh, excuse me, that's the definition of reparations. Now here's the issue. Now, in some ways, given the vast wealth of this nation, I have, I, I'm a little curious as to why we would restrict it only to one aspect of definition of reparations as opposed to the expansive definition of reparations. I want it all. I want all of it. And in that regard, as we're looking at who we are as a people, I'm troubled by any effort to maybe unintentionally to sort of have us turn against each other. For ex, let, let, but, let me, let me finish, let me finish my, we listened here for, we've listened for hours. I am not about, I, 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 I am a devotee of the honorable Marcus Mosaic Garvey. Marcus Garvey came from Jamaica to this country, right?
Excuse me, this is not a back and forth debate. These are comments from a commissioner. So I would kindly respect that as the commissioners listen to all of the witnesses, that we would also be able to engage in the back and forth dialogue.
Commissioner, may I?
I am not about
I wanted to give Commissioner Daniels, uh, Dr. Daniels, an opportunity to finish his statement. He's not intending to preach. He's trying to bring clarity from our perspective and we're gonna all be done very soon if you guys would just give him a moment to bring his points to an end.
Yeah, and by the way, every commissioner may not agree with my position. We just articulate, I'm just sharing my view and I'm sharing it for a, a, a reason. I'm not about to deny the sons and daughters of Marcus Garvey reparations, nor that of Shirley Chisholm, Kwame Ture, Harry Belafonte. I, I'm just not, I'm just not, I don't see why we would want to do that. We want all of it. These are people who have come to this country. They're from immigrant backgrounds and many of them have become leaders in the liberation struggle. One person's immigration, one immigrant from one generation is the African American of the next generation. So we ought to all be working collectively and working together in order to move, in order to move.
So if I may just retake the meeting for a moment, may I retake the meeting? May I, may I retake the meeting for a moment? And I appreciate everybody's compassion. What I want to do is bring the meeting to an end only because, only because we have spent a lot of time here and hopefully in our next meeting, we'll be able to share with you all from our own, as Dr. Daniels started, our own specific positions, because I don't think that's something that we've been able to do as yet. And then you'll have a better sense of where we as a commission, um, stand with what we've heard and what we are examining and what we will be considering. But the work is far ahead of us, have a lot to do. And we are very, very grateful for all of your powerful testimonies tonight. We really do appreciate you all and hopefully next meeting, we'll have you all back. You can come back, I hope, and we'll be able to share also. Hopefully that will be something that will be on the agenda because I think since we've been, um, a commission, you have not heard our positions. So hopefully we'll be able to do that.
I, 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 no, no, no. I'm not finished. I, I'm, I'm almost finished.
We're going to bring our meeting to a close right now.
I'm not finished my statement. I have not finished my state. I'm about to finish. I have one, I have
Please take it up with the legislature.
I have another minute.
Please take up your concerns with the legislature. They have the capacity to hear you. Take it up with the legislature. This is what yelling into the void sounds like. Take it up with the legislature.
We have a motion to bring the meeting to an end. We don't need a motion. So we are done, Senator. We're done. He said, we don't need a motion. He said, we don't need a motion. So it's done.
Yeah, thank, thank you for coming out of Queens. This meeting is now officially done and thank you.
The black Americans have been the, the only real diehard Americans here because we, we're the only ones who, who carried the process through the process. That everyone else has to sort of like skip stages. We're the ones who marched, we're the ones who carried the Bible, we're the ones who carried the flag, we're the ones who tried to go through the bush. And, 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 and being born Americans didn't, didn't seem to matter because we were born Americans, but we still had to fight for what we were looking for and we still had to go through those channels and those processes.
The way it currently stands, forced labor, slavery takes precedence over rehabilitation and public safety.
Oh, by the way, while the Biden administration gives reparations to everyone but free people, look at the billions he has run over to Ukraine.
We don't have black grocery stores because if you think about it now, just to get in that supply chain, it's almost unheard of.
They don't want the truth to get out. Okay? I don't want to know what my family did or what all these people did and all this stuff like that. Okay? You read that 500-page report.
There's this thing called white superiority and black inferiority. That mindset allows all of the behaviors that we've seen across generations, allows for the construction of these policies and practices and, and systems and structures that continue to oppress us.
This is not a handout. This is a debt that is owed.
You know, Allen's worth was like the internet of his time in 1904, 1905.
The total black population in California is about 2.6 million and then of that, the descendants compose about 2.2 million of that. So Calif, California with a multi-billion dollar surplus can absolutely afford to satisfy the, uh, international terms for reparations, beginning with compensation.
Any financial obstacle that exists that impedes the success of increasing financial prosperity needs to be dealt with and eliminated.
No, no matter where we've been, no matter what part of this fight we've been in, we've been harmed and we've had harm done to us specifically.
Uh, when I got to Los Angeles, this was some of the worst segregation I'd ever seen. And remember, I'm telling you, I'm from Mississippi.
Because as you can see, I'm giving you broken mysteries right now, you know? Uh, but, but I had to give it to you guys today. I said, no, I gotta show them this because it's so precious and nobody really knows about it.
Black people don't have that kind of luxury. Our, our, our historically black communities have been, um, redistricted multiple times.
Now listen, if you can't handle the TR roof, don't tune in.